Okay. We'll take a seat. I think the, uh, Richard's going on.
Uh, it should be next way around if it's not being turned or as you said, yes.
Okay. Right, okay, item one on the agenda, if you can start. It's, uh, upon your trappings.
Chair, Mr Mayor, I received apologies from councillor, um, John Alpertons.
Okay.
Councillor, councillor Alpertons sends her apologies. I am Alpertons.
Okay. Item two, it's, uh, received decorations of interest.
Brockstone.
Brockstone.
Um, sorry, hand up that man as well. Brockstone and, uh, my son's twenty five.
Well, good, cool, we just have a showdown for Brock, I believe. Okay. What was it, on David, sorry?
And lock that man.
Call him, look at me. I've just stayed in. And, and Tim. Okay. Okay, allotments.
Um, item twenty five.
Yeah. Item twenty five, and so.
Okay, continue.
May the announcement, oh, sorry, just may I put you in door for me for a second, please?
Yes, okay.
Mr Mayor, Mr Mayor, um, thank you. Actually, I have concerns about the length of this agenda and, um, in all the twenty years that I know, we've never had it this long. And if we're going to go through most things here, some of the things you will find that are on here, when it comes up, um, there is a shorter way of making things come to the council later in the year.
Okay. You got that? Thank you. Okay, item three is the mayor's announcement. Well, I've enjoyed myself today and, uh, hopefully I've got the digging tomorrow to, uh, you know, in support, so.
Put the wagons on.
Yeah, of course, yeah, of course, probably, yeah, probably. I think it might be a little bit waterlogged, but nevertheless, I'm going to meet, uh, the board there as well. But yes, it's been quite eventful. Start. Say to this. Okay. Right, we'll carry on, item four, public participation session.
Mr Mayor, we have no notification of members of the public wishing to speak.
Okay. So, item five, to receive reports from the following county councillors, I don't think I've any. We haven't done the, no.
You do?
Can you, eh? Not Steve Hammer. And the, and Borough Councils, eh? Gee, would be an idea, first of all, I've seen this, obviously, I'm not very good on computers, wouldn't you? An idea with the Borough Councils all doing reports, I mean, is that six of us here, isn't it? One, two, yeah, six, in six. If each one of us picked what relevant committees were on. Okay. Right, I know you're not on one.
No, we're not.
No, but we are on, sorry. So if each one of us picked whatever relevant committees were on, perhaps we can give them a report. I know some of us are on the same, but Tim, like you, your, your job's a gobby, aren't you? Richard's safety and whatever, David's planning, Anne's planning, you know what I'm saying? You know, your, whatever we're all on, would it be better that way?
I think so.
Yeah, or, and as in, the, the relevant committees that we're all on, if we all decide between ourselves what we want to make reports on.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I made that proposal. Absolutely. Probably we pay with that. Yeah, this again, that's kind of. Okay, John? Okay, we'll, we'll sort it out for the next meeting. Yeah, yeah. Right, item six is to confirm and sign the minutes of town council, uh, council being held on sixth of September.
Mr Mayor, may I, may I propose that the, uh, for the minutes of the last meeting, we're in true correct record?
Okay. Carry on. Oh, all is great, other than, okay, thank you very much. We're going to. Okay. Item seven is to have the drawing. Of those minutes. There we have item eight, which is a report from the town.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, this is just to sort of give an update on where I've been, and obviously I've been here for six weeks now. Um, so the first thing that I've been getting involved in is the allotments. I've been on a tour, Tony's taken me around, shown me everything. Um, I've been making contact with the people that are on waiting lists and we've been meeting them on site to try and let a few more of the allotments. Been, hopefully, quite successful, we just need to, uh, just have a bit of a conversation with those people. And we've got some ideas as well about trying to perhaps split some of the plots because, um, some of these people are people that work and to have some of those plots on massive is the best way to inspire them. And to, to have something more manageable for people, I think would be much more encouraging and perhaps something that we could look at later on. And, and I've also been attending to some maintenance issues as well, so, um, we've had a leaky tap on one of the, um, sides which we've had sticks and then some of the hedges have been needed to be cut as well, so they've been dealing back in the past couple of weeks as well. And the next item is the under-year audit. Um, I've sent that round to everybody by email, but just to confirm, it's been passed, it's fine, it's been put on all notice boards of the website as it needs to be. And the final thing is the fire alarm service has been carried out for the building, so hopefully we won't burn horribly. If there's a fire in the building, we'll all work fine. And, and that's it, Billy, that's, that's all I've been up to really at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was there any comment, Paul? Okay. So, item nine is plan applications.
So there's just one, um, one that's been on the weekly list. It has been circulated around to everybody as part of the weekly list, I hope you people have had a chance to have a look. And so it's important for us to comment really.
So, do you have any comments about it?
Uh, no, it's all on our agenda.
Mr Mayor, um, I don't know if I'm planning, and perhaps I'm not planning, we won't be able to figure about these things anyway, just to remind you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh.
Sorry, I think I've got one comment that, um, it, it looks fine apart from I'm not sure about how it will impact with the Fields Farm development being over the road with traffic coming out of the, the, the road. Because it is, because I think there's parking for six cars planned coming out onto Elcyston Road through a small access point. And obviously with the Fields Farm development going on the opposite side, that's the only thing I can see. And I think from what I read of the, uh, planning application, that seems to be the only thing that they're querying at the moment for us to approve. Because the actual plans don't have the details of the buildings and such as yet.
All right, okay. Thank you, Captain Lee. Um, right, uh.
Do you have to read all the not to object objects? We need to decide whether we're going to object or not to object, actually.
What did I say?
To the application.
Yes, um, all in favor, oh, sorry, we need, we need, uh, we need a proposal, sorry. Well, I could have a proposal for the, uh, the, um, development, uh, the, uh, planning application for. Who is it?
Sorry, sorry, councillors, we need to decide whether we're going to object or not to object to the application, so if somebody was.
I would like to object, uh.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, object to base on highway grounds, eh?
The highway grounds, the lack of parking, and also, we don't know what's being built there. We need to know the full story before we can make our sort of, um, commentary, as we, this morning, we're talking about at the Traffic and Transport Committee. It's a big problem in Stapleford, and so to have more things in there is just going to add more problems, so that's why I object to it, I'm afraid.
Okay. Right, could, could we overlook this then, please? Uh, all in, all in favour of the development?
Objection, objection.
Or objection, yes. Okay. Anything? And again. Gee, gee, should we just add a note back to the Borough that they are our objections from the town council?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's going to be, uh, affordable, I think, probably.
Um, it depends on, yeah, we ju- we just don't know.
It's preliminary, I think.
That's the draw, I think, yeah.
Through the chair, if I could just explain, an outline application is actually just, are we happy with the principle of a development there? It will come back for a full application later on with proper details of that application. So if we wanted to object on highway grounds, that would be okay, in terms of the detail of the application, we don't know what that will be at this point.
So it'd be inferred, yes, yeah.
And that would come later, or we can sort it again at that point.
Well, yeah, I think for the, the roads, especially on that, yeah, it's, as I stated, I'd object, sorry.
But we, we need to have the opportunity of looking at it as well, of course.
We, it'll come back later on, uh, Mr Mayor, when they put in proper application.
That's okay. Right, item ten, to receive the note of the minutes of the standing committee number of bodies of the town council. Item one, okay. Plan member for the committee.
Yeah, okay, so we've actually met twice since the last full council meeting. Um, I think we've all had the, um, minutes circulated. Uh, so what I would say is thank you to everybody for reading the planning applications in advance and making those meetings go very, very quickly. So quickly, in fact, that we have, uh, recommended that, uh, the planning committee be merged with the climate emergency committee because we feel that we can tackle both issues within the timeframe of a committee meeting to streamline things a bit. Um, so that's the main recommendation, and I think that's been put circulated in the, uh, standing orders that we would like to put forward, so that's the big, the main.
Could I say a bit?
Could I just ask, is that, um, you're holding two separate meetings on the same night, do you mean, uh, to save time, or, or is it going to be merged?
I think it's going to be merged because planning, uh, because I think planning environment and the climate emergency kind of lend into it, because it can be planning issues ultimately.
Okay, could I say a bit for that? Okay. Okay, all in favour? You're against? Abstentions? Go. Okay. Item two, planning in general, good to committee. 什么东西?
Um, so the main points we discussed at planning in general places, um, were, uh, there's a couple of items further down the agenda, actually, um, about the, so, uh, terms of reference, uh, which is a, a topic that all committees and, uh, that, uh, has been proposed. Um, and also the fact that at the moment we haven't got any financial recommendations in place, um, so it's brilliant us working on those. I think they'll come to us at, uh, a next date. Um, and a few bits of pieces, um, because we've got a budget, a thing that we'd like to include in the budget next time. So, uh, we've got, so, staff training and councillor training, um, are the two main things that we would like to add to the budget for this year's, uh, or, or we do this year's, uh, well, next year's budget, should I say. Uh, so that is, uh, pretty much, um, everything that is there. Um, we did discuss the prospect of the three-year budget, um, as well, uh, the advantages, um, of, of that are that you can kind of, you know, you know, plan further down like or, or the budgets, and require us, um, I think to be a member of that, because that. And maybe that's a few, just again, with the, um, the House of Lords, um, we need to start doing that. Okay, but we're starting a lot of three-year budget and that, okay, well, ignore that for now. Uh, but that, that's, uh, that's pretty much the outline of the finance and general purposes, uh, that we have.
Um, I have a question, is bothering me. The question is, if you become, listen, correct me if I'm wrong, that you would like to take this committee and make decisions, uh, in the committee itself rather than the council. If that's the case, I've got a problem with that. I don't mind you making recommendations and bringing them back to the full council to make a decision on it. But just having a committee and making that decision on the committee sits very uncomfortable with me. I think it should be made by the full council and not just by, no matter who they are, um, say, uh, good councillors. It should be in case, like, it should be brought to all of us to have a look at it. Once the recommendations have been finalized by the committees itself, then it should be brought back to council. I don't believe it's advantageous, safe, or, um, good for it to actually be made in that decision. If I'm barking up the wrong tree, please tell me. If it's not, then that's what are my problems are.
Okay.
Yeah, um, can I, can I just respond to that, please?
Yes, yeah, please, yeah.
I think we're going to look at the, um, terms of reference that, that the clerk's laid out for us and discussed those things, uh, but just to answer the question, in, in my view, it'd be a little pointless in having a committee that didn't make some decisions on behalf of the council. It'd be pointless having a committee otherwise. Um, so, uh, that, that, that's my view of the matter, but as it is, at the, the current standing orders, the clerk can spend quite a lot of subs- quite substantial funding uh, without the permission of the council at all, so that's something that, you know, it's, yeah, it's interesting. So, I think, but, but we're going to debate it a bit further down the agenda anyway, so.
Yeah, it's just something, this is very, very uncomfortable with me. And it's something I think that, I just think it's best to document the whole council once, something like that. I have a problem with some of the others being given committees to make decisions, et cetera, that's a brilliant idea. But finance, I think, has to stop at the full council, the final, uh, so-so, and that's just one of the.
I think, I think it's, well, let's just, shall we just, I'm going to propose that we're through the minutes and we'll discuss that further down the agenda anyway, because it, it, it will come under the, um, the item further down the, um, terms of reference, if that's okay. So, I would propose that we accept the minutes for finance and general purposes and second round.
I'm sorry, sorry, zoom, please.
Our second.
Second, second.
The minutes.
Okay.
So, all in favour? Yeah. Okay, can we, can we have all in favour?
Yes, all in favour. Yes, that's covered, yes. Okay, but I think it's on point, it's quite, quite important that we should respond to the full council if you're going to reserve a moment.
It is, it's, it's got to, but as you've pointed out, we're going to discuss that later on, so I'm not going to.
Yeah, okay, fine, okay.
It's a very real night.
Right, uh, item three is a steering group.
Events, steering groups. Events. Um, yeah, we had a really positive meeting, uh, the first events steering group. We had, uh, members from the helpful bureau, uh, Shas' Angels, and a few other people, um, and a few other councillors. Um, just basically discussing what sort of events people would like to see in Stapleford. Um, obviously, we discussed Remembrance Sunday, VE Day, VJ Day for next year. And what we're hoping to do is bring together parts of the community that fell outside of the group and create that committee from them, so people will be co-opted on to the committee, it won't just be councillors all the time. It will be members of the public charities and things, um, to talk to us about the things that they would like to see in Stapleford. Um, we spoke about Remembrance Sunday, um, at length, and what people would like to see and what they'd like to do. Obviously, it's all there in the minutes. Um, so, yeah, basically, that's what we did at the first one, and then. So, yeah, that's fire too, really.
Okay.
Fine. All right, we've both got the, uh, on our mind, both yourselves, your group, and ourselves. Um, John has got a brilliant idea for the Saturday that he's feeling. He's got, uh, beer barrel for, is it every club you've got on for him?
No, we haven't.
Every club, he's going to get a tent and that sort of stuff like that. That date needs acts, that date needs things to go in there, and that would be brilliant if we can work together and get that locked in.
Could I, could I just, could you get that, it's going to be brought up later, Simon?
Yeah, can I just say one more thing before?
Sorry?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, surely.
The idea that Richard came up with for the Friday, he's been done up and down the country. Uh, I branched down the aisle of why he's doing it, which is a, a full.
I don't know what you, until we see.
It's, yeah, which you will do. It's a full list of events that's going all the way through, and it's going up and down through the country at set times. And this will go all the way through from, what time does it start, Richard?
Are we discussing this later?
Yeah, we'll discuss it later, yeah.
Yeah, this, I mean, the thing is, hopefully, the event's purpose is about bringing all the other groups on the umbrella of the town council and fund a lot of these events with funding from other areas. You know, we have the responsibility of, uh, stewarding the event, um, you know.
Well, I realised that, and I was saying that it needs to be done for the Saturday, exactly.
Yeah, but it's, this is about umbrellaing, so we can start talking between all the different groups and committees rather than this, like you've said, this strand going off and doing that, then doing that, eh?
I don't agree, discuss it later.
It's, yeah, it's on the agenda to discuss it later.
Yeah, just, just, I'll go with it first, I'll go with it first.
Yeah, it, it baffled me a little bit as well, because the, the Stapleford Members, which we're speaking about in a little bit, but it does come on, it's meant to be same things as on A, so I'm going to mention it anyway, was set up in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and, and there's been lots of confusion with various groups in Stapleford because they've all been invited to the Stapleford Members thing, as they have been for the past five or six years. And every time we've had these events, everybody's worked together, a report's always been given to the town council, as will be done in a bit, uh, and the town council's always supported it, and, and it was set up as a, um, rather group, under Stapleford Community Group, but it was done with the churches, the schools, uh, councillors have supported it, it's been anybody and everybody, and that's, when it was set up, Simon was one of the original people on there, uh, Dave's always helped, John's always helped, and, and other people. And the, the, the whole thing about that was to do stuff in twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen, and then obviously this year, which, you know, they've, they've both been rolling for all them years, and then all of a sudden, another group's trying to come along, and it's really confused a lot of people as to what's going on because they know there's an official group already doing it, they get funding, they get the backing of the town council, the Borough Council and all that lot. And then that's just one thing, and then the other thing on here, it's quite, quite important about co-option and representatives, brilliant, um, because it seems good to have different groups and that working together, that, that's what it should be. My only concern is that any, any group, uh, because every time we've been stuck, as in, I say we, I mean, say few, few, when we've been stuck with the town council, we've always had to come to the town clerk and give a copy of the bank account, a copy of the, uh, constitution, a copy of the, uh, public liability insurance, and I'm hoping that any other group that does that should have to do the same, because at the end of the day, anybody that's working with the council, you, you've got to, uh, I can't think of what the word is, you don't want to bring the council into disrepute, so you've got to make sure all these groups, and I'm sure they all have, I do, and I don't mean the councils, I've seen them, because they don't, but at least the town clerk presented with these things, and like I said, public liability insurance, it's important, because if someone gets hurt, that we don't want the council having to pay out to them, or maybe it's like what happened. Hopefully, and it does, people need to have constitutions, people need to have bank accounts, because if there's money involved, you can't be giving it to individual people, it's got to go into name to council and that. So that, that was that, and then, just, hang on, I'm going to turn off, just a bit, any more, thank you, listen, and, and, uh,
Sorry, point of order, can I just say, we're well off the agenda here, and this is.
No, because we're talking about the events committee, this is what I'm talking about.
And, but it, but it's, 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 we're discussing further down the agenda.
Yeah, but I'm talking about this, it's in front of me now, I'm talking about the events committee, I'm picking things on there, so, hung up the bell, mentioned something else tonight.
If I got right to reply, it's like, um.
Well, I haven't finished speaking, yeah? So, there's still a bit that goes on here, wasn't it, because it says down here, hang on, I've lost the page, hang on, hang on.
Do you want to pass it to the councillor?
Right, on the next bit, uh, we've had high diggers, it says, Reverend being talked about query arrangements for the eleven for the eleven service, you want to be warned that a minister would need to be officially bored. Well, the eleven for the eleven actually falls on the Monday, and there's never a vicar or anybody there, it's always an event that the combined services organise, it always happens, unless it falls, unless the day falls on the actual day, the combined services always organise it, and they always invite councils to come along and that. They, it's already been organised, they, they was at the meeting the other week, they've, you know, they know what's happening, they know what time everybody's turning up, they know you're, it's, it's not a big service, we're there for about five or 10 minutes, they put a roof down, someone does some speaking, and it's been the same every year for years. It's not, not, not being ripped to church, they're never involved in that, um, so that's perhaps why the vicar was a bit, didn't know what was going on, because it's, it's changed you in the past. And then the last thing, which was mentioned on here, was, was it? Um, laying the roofs on the day, there was, there was concern, a volunteer has to, um, call out the orders that the, the roof's, like, that's always been the responsibility of the town clerk, as the, um, the responsible officer for the council, and, and as such, it's always the town clerk that says next, 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 and calls the names out. And, and there's been concern, because we've got a resident there, and how's that resident picked, has the whole of the town been invited to submit some money forward, and they haven't. So, you know, the feeling of, and this is the combined service as well, it should be the town clerk doing it, we can't understand why this order has suddenly changed to something that's been the same for a long time, and this is going to happen again.
Can I, can I stop you there, Richard, please? I think we've heard quite enough for, uh, for this, can I, may the council talk this off?
Mr Mayor, I've got nothing to say, I think, um, I'm, I'm not having anything to say, I'll, I'll, I'll pass over to the leader of the council.
Okay.
I think, seeing as we're insisting on discussing this, um, I have already discussed this with you via email anyway, Richard. My lead report in July is what led to the events working group being set up, it was proposed by John Murrath, and I'm pretty sure that everybody around this table voted in favour of it. And it came from the fact that the VE Day and the VJ Day celebrations, the Brockstone Borough Council had pledged this money, and it came from the part of the report from where you and I, and councillor Frost, all three of us went to the Borough Parish Meeting where it was announced, and that's why it came up. You voted in favour of it, you voted i- i- in favour of the, um, proposal for the, the money, you knew that it was going to be discussed. I told you on the Friday, before I did, before I sent the agenda, I asked you to look at the agenda, to see what you think of the agenda, do you think I need to add anything on there? You never had any objection up until the point that the agenda went out, and I'm completely baffled about why you've suddenly decided that this is being done the wrong way.
I'm not saying it's the wrong way, people just think that another group that's been doing this for years are being pushed out, must be a feeling.
They're absolutely not being pushed out, they were invited to come along and speak to the rest of the council, and speak to the, they were invited to come along to the events working group. they were invited to come along to the events working group, absolutely nobody had been pushed out. If people had been able to come along and say, look, this is what we normally do, i- i- I'm sure there, there'd have been, there'd have been no issue with that. It's an event put on essentially, you know, by the town council, because the town council are paid for that. There's, there's no, there's no argument about who should arrange what or, you know, whatever, if people want to come along. It's, it's not just about one event, this is about events that the town council have always put on for years to come. You know, nobody said that the VE Day, the VJ Day would be just done by the town council, or would be just done by Stapleford Members. The point is, the town council have a vested interest in making sure that this community is served properly and, and is getting value for money from the precept, and part of that is the events working group. Now, I'm not saying that we're not getting value for money from Stapleford Members and, and the part of it that, that they do, but it, it's, it's, it's the, the event as a whole, and if people, if, if other groups want to be involved, then they're more than welcome to come to the events working committee, and they were invited.
But it works as a two-way thing.
Okay, just, just, please come through the chair.
Well, it's fine today.
Richard, please come through the chair, if you're good to say something, okay. Uh, can I, uh, Simon, Simon, please?
I'm gonna make a motion, very simple motion, and a little point. We need to get this working together, Richard's got it, we need to make sure that the combined services don't feel that they're pushed out. Can I make a very simple motion that before we go forward and organise the, uh, Remembrance Day or anything like that, a small meeting with your good self, Ella, with Richard and the combined services, talk about what's going on so nobody's pushed out of the loop or feel that they're being pushed out. It's a bit of a compromise, but I think that's the best way forward to stop the anger that's building up in this room.
Can I just check?
That's, yeah, we've got two for it, and then we've got...
We did actually have a meeting with the combined services, and a lot of the things that were mentioned at the events working group came from the combined services when we met with him. Uh, Chris, I think his name was, from combined services, we actually did meet with him, so that we knew the sort of things that they wanted on the members, and they say nobody is being pushed out, it's about, and I don't want to upset people, um, but there's a lot of people in this community that actually do feel pushed out at the moment. They will get involved with the town council in doing things, it's like, um, Stapleford Remembers, I do a lot of craft projects, but I never felt, I've lived in Stapleford for years and years and years, and I never felt that I could get involved in doing anything, and I know there's lots of other people out there that feel that way, that will come under into the town council rather than these other groups, because I didn't realise, combined services, that anybody could actually attend their meetings, whether you got served or not, you know, people don't know these things.
Okay, John.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councillors, I found the meetings that I attended to be, um, extremely good, they were fair, people were happy to, to be working and putting their ideas together, I, I think, um, we don't need all this control. We were working together, it was per, it was, they were perfectly good meetings, and I was very happy to go along with it, and I think we'll get more and more people involved this year than, than we've ever had. There was so, there was so much interest, and I, I, I think that Richard, uh, and his community group do like to be in control. Well, it's, I speak English, I do think that they like to be in control, and, um, the whole point is that no one should be in control, it is, uh, it, it's for all, everybody in the community, there are some brilliant ideas, really looking forward to it, and we should be working together, and enough of this argument.
Okay, thank you, thanks for that.
Chair, first of, first of all, let me say that, yes, I suggested this for one reason, as the leader's pointed out, is to get everybody under the same umbrella and stop this chewing and throwing about this. Richard's right, so the Remembers, if I remember, when I pulled in the poem, was formed by Brenda, Amanda Hall, you said? Well, Richard, I'm not getting to my room, mate, I said, as I remember, right? But they had a lot to do with it, so did David, right, so did quite a few others. So that was the idea, to get Stapleford Remembers, from there, we've moved on. I suggested the events committee to get all the people in the town involved in things, there is people like Shaz's Angels, the Gateway Club, that's got mentally handicapped people and this, that and the other, I get, I help them all the time, I'm, I don't go through a blue Peter Bash, sorry to pull, but there is a lot of people that don't know what was out, off out there and that are proud of this town, they need to be under Stapleford Town Council's umbrella, right? We all need to be under the same umbrella fully the same way. So then, as you know, Richard, I went to the combined services, I told them what ideas I had, right? Which since then, we've tried to move forward, I told them what ideas, Tojo and all the lads were all happy, we're all gonna get dug in, I've gone round, I've got a barrel from every pub in Stapleford, right, I've got a bar, I've got this, I've got that. I, I am on it, the people of Stapleford have done it by sending the gear to us, right? I'm meeting the, what do you call them, Janu, in the army, won't you, not the army, the RSM of Chilwell and the Brigadier, they're meeting me with, with members of the combined services, and you're all welcome to come as well, right? On November the sixth, at twelve o'clock, I think it's late, Stapleford Town FC, they have got the twelve, is it twelve million or ten million li- public liability, right? So I'm sure we can go through their books and this, that and the other, but logically, we've all got to do it together, for the benefit of Stapleford and all the rest of us.
So what time is it on November the sixth?
Simon.
Twelve.
Right, thank you. I think I'm remembering that motion I brought in because I was lying on the dentist's table under it, and I couldn't come. Um, I think it's a case of like, we do need to work together, get this sorted and mesh. Richard's, as I said, got some very good ideas, everybody round this table has some good ideas, and we're gonna have to get this going. We've got until, no, I believe it is, which isn't long, we can either start arguing, or we can start doing. Now, there are some people that have thrown a few bits of aggro one way and two ways, it needs to stop. And I'm not gonna say anybody, because I'm not just saying it's one person or the other, it's a few people, and it needs to stop now. We're adults, we're councillors, let's act like this.
Like just saying, if anybody's in the meeting, for effect, through the chair, um, the meeting is on Monday at half past ten for the events committee, and it will be nice if more people would get involved.
My apologies, Sue, sorry, Chair, I'll be grafted.
All right.
Sorry, Ellen, yeah.
Can I move for accept the minutes, please, Chair?
Yeah.
Can I move for accept the minutes again?
Yeah, yeah.
All in, all in favour of the business, yes, please. Can I have it again? Upstations? No, okay, okay. Well, the neighbourhood planning steering group is the next one.
This should be nice one, yeah.
Right, they can still, no, wrong one, um, Richard, so I'm really sorry. The neighbourhood plan, we've had a really nice gentleman, uh, Sabrina sorted out for us. Um, we've had all the information that's been sent around to us, and he is a breath of fresh air. Um, his name's Colin, and he can literally rebuild the neighbourhood plan with us. There's funding we didn't even know about, but he knows about, that we make our plan one of the greenest, one of the best, and one of the most forward-thinking plans in the area. We've got the skills to do this, with everybody sitting around this table has got an invite to it. We push forward, we've got the outline sorted out, we've sent the outline, right, haven't we?
To the neighbourhood planning group.
Yes, to the neighbourhood planning group, if anybody wants, they can get in contact and I'll make sure that everybody can have it. Um, as you know, the first one wasn't particularly inspiring, I think I'm gonna choose those ones. Now we've managed to pull everything back and we're working hard on it to make it brilliant and a way forward. Have you got any good thoughts?
That would be approval to get Colin to go on.
Colin, um, as I said, you, you obviously all have the information sent out by Colin about what he can offer, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to bring him to the council, that we actually take him up on this and hire him for the events, stop it, for the, for the neighbourhood plan, and can I go on now? For the neighbourhood plan, and we finish what we started and make this plan proud of Stapleford, proud for the people of Stapleford, and proud for the next fifteen years from when they sent it forward. So, Chair, if I can, oh, I forgot, uh, I couldn't remember the cost.
Um, I thought, I think it was sixty five pounds a day.
It was.
An hour, an hour.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it was, yeah, sorry. For, for the Chair, it will all be paid for by grant funding, so he, he will actually, um, do the grant funding application for you free of charge, he won't charge you to do that.
It was a brush refresh area in my case.
Uh, councillor, Brinna.
Yeah, um, my, the neighbourhood plan first started, and we'd done about six months of it, Mr. Mayor. As I said all along, there's no meat on the bone whatsoever. A lot of ups and downs have been going on with this neighbourhood plan, until Si and Theresa, especially Theresa there, uh, got older of it and put some meat on the bone. The actual plan now looks a lot better than it did.
It does.
Two and a half years or even a year ago, and I think, Chair, um, and I like this minute, or thank you personally, I don't know whether one agrees with me, that Si and, uh, Theresa have done a brilliant job up to now.
And so Theresa.
And, I said Theresa.
Yeah, Chair.
And, and young Theresa, and, and I think they've done a brilliant job with the rest of the team, so...
We couldn't have done it without everybody to come to the meeting, so...
Yeah, through the chair.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's important that this has the best meat on the bone that any neighbourhood plan has got, because Stapleford needs that neighbourhood plan.
We're gonna do that anyway. So, yes, that's one proposal, so we hire Colin.
Can I second that?
Yeah.
That's, second, okay, all in favour? That's going to be an announcement, okay?
Chair, Chair, just quickly then, do we get any money, no, because we're all came first, didn't we? They got their in first, didn't they, haven't they? So we won't, yeah, so I wonder if we got any money, three should have got our in first, that's all.
No, no, it's not a competition.
Well, we're not all saying we got their in first. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, right, I can go on, uh, Richard, some human resources, and policies committed, policy review, we can...
Uh, yeah, that will be, uh, me to get, yes, um, crikey, it was a long time ago now, so you get them up on your screen for the council, just to remind me, do you have what, again? Sorry, I've forgotten, uh, oh, I forgot your... Uh, yeah, so this was, this was in, uh, July, so, I'm just hanging on. Okay, so we, uh, yeah, so we, uh, obviously we appointed a Chair, which is herself a Vice Chair, uh, councillor Gold. Um, we, um, also, uh, appointed, so obviously there's four of us on the committee at the moment, um, and we appointed each, um, member, um, sort of responsible, um, in the first instance, for creating or for, you know, overseeing the creation of, um, the policies that we have missing. So I think that councillor Brown's sort of looking at, uh, health and safety, uh, councillor McCrae's, uh, done quite a lot of work already on GDPR. Um, I'm looking at equal opportunities and HR and councillor Gold is, um, sort of looking at complaints and the way that we, um, process those. Um, we also talked about, um, how to manage the, uh, professional development of, um, the town clerk, or anybody that is ever in the town clerk, though it's not specifically this, uh, town clerk that we have now, hopefully she'll stay with us for a long time to come, uh, but, um, we, uh, it's, that's something that's ongoing, uh, I'm investigating at the moment, um, we discussed a couple of different ways of doing that, uh, maybe, uh, two separate councillors being responsible for that, rather than just the leader, for the sake of priority, and, you know, making sure that the town clerk always has somebody to go to, uh, if she's not getting on with the leader, she, uh, might prefer to go to another councillor, it would be good if, you know, um, from the snap, or, you know, from the point of view of checks and balances and making sure that there's no favoritism as well from the other side. Um, uh, the other thing that we, uh, said that we would look at is whether it might be, um, we need to get third party from the Borough to do, um, continuing professional development, uh, for the town clerk. So, uh, that, that will be discussed at the next, uh, meeting. Um, obviously, there's a lot in here that's sort of quite out of date now, because it's about the recruitment of town, of the town clerk and where we've got to with that, um, recruitment of, um, the administration system, which, um, I will, I will perhaps update you very quickly at the end of the agenda when the, uh, public press has been excluded, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, but I, I think most of you, uh, know about that now anyway. Um, and then the other things really were just, uh, stepping matters, that, which again are confidential, and I think most of you are aware of, if anybody, um, would like to know more, please, um, come and ask me, but obviously I may be limited in, uh, what I can, can or can't tell you. Uh, yes, yeah, um, and then, um, I think, yeah, the, I, I think that's the gist of it, really. I don't think there's, uh, much more to talk about, you know, for human resources, there, we have got, um, we, we've got a meeting, a meeting for the next meeting shortly, um, there's a couple of items that we need to discuss on the agenda, so the town clerk will be in touch about that, uh, so, uh, anybody who...
Do you have any questions for the leader? Yeah, okay.
I'm proposing accept the minutes, so, Mr. Mayor.
We propose them, you have a second, please? Okay, all in favour? Can I be announced? That's fine, thank you, right, like eleven. Uh, uh, to approve, uh, terms of preference for the following, Plan, Planning and Environment Committee. I think we ought to shorten that, we use a...
Uh, sorry, Chair, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is, um, something that probably should have been done at your annual meeting and get it forward, it will be like something that happens at the annual meeting, um, you need to have terms of reference from each of your committees, so that we understand what each committee is responsible for, what they can make decisions on, and what has to come back to council. Um, so I drafted these for your discussion this evening, um, hopefully they'll apply. I've included in the Planning and Environment Committee, the Climate Emergency, um, Committee as well, just in line, just in case it happened to, to be approved. Um, so it's over to the floor, really.
Okay, do you have any questions on that, anyone, more to ask any, Simon?
As well, we asked questions about the...
So this is the planning, because I will do planning files after, so just plan, just the planning ones.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, yeah, a similar, um, similar translation to, uh, to what councillor Frost mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think that the terms of preference for the committees are a very good idea. It's always useful to have terms of preference for any role, so that you know exactly what you're trying to achieve, and, uh, and that enables you to achieve it better. Um, the, uh, there is a bit of, a bit of openness in this, um, relating to considering determining other matters as maybe referred to it from time to time by town council. I don't, I quite understand, uh, what the scope of that is, it's sort of, feels a bit, a little bit open-ended to me. Um, and, uh, can respond on behalf of the council, uh, without, to, to do so, to be authorised under terms of preference to do so without coming back and making recommendations to the full council, I don't have a problem with. I don't have a problem with. The, I think the delegation is a really important part of management. What does concern me is that as a full council, we have a quorum of six. So, and so for a, to devolve responsibility to a committee that only has a quorum of three means that theoretically only three people could be making decisions on behalf of the full council. And I do find that, Mr Mayor, quite concerning.
That would be a sign, stop that. Okay.
Just to come back to the quorum issue. I'd sort of agree with you, I'm not sure for reason or but the issue that we've got at the moment is that is what our current standing orders state is for a committee. So that is an issue really for us to address in the standing orders and perhaps update the terms of reference later on. If I finish your response to that.
Was that the proposal? Was that what you proposed?
Well, no, I can't propose we change the standing orders here now because we have to, you know, look at the wording. But I'm just explaining to Tim why that is what it says in the terms of reference at the moment. Because our standing orders say that the quorum of a committee is three. So therefore that's what the terms of reference will say.
Simon. Tim, we'll start it before we start it.
Well, I do, I give Tim. May, may I make a proposal on the, on the basis of this then? That considering a proposal or amendment, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on terms of this and I would accept the town clerk's advice. That an item be added on to the membership and quorum to say that decisions made on behalf of the council should have a quorum, a quorum of six, but the committee may operate and make recommendations to the council with a quorum of three. That feels to me like it's a good compromise.
Can you postpone that?
Because we just take part of the town clerk first.
So, so it's standard practice to have a third of your membership subject to a minimum of three. In your actual standing orders, it does say three plus the chairman, so that would be four councillors. I've done this based on normal standards, basically. So it is up to you as to whether you want that to be a quorum or not. But if you're going to suggest that you have, because I think there's only sort of six or seven members, there's eight on this particular one, to have to have six committee members, you're probably going to end up not actually doing any business if people can't make it to the meeting. So in terms of the planning applications, it's normal because of the timing, it's involved in actually responding to the consultations. It's normal to have decisions made in between council meetings and reported back to council for ratification.
Simon, I still think that what Tim said is valid. If we have six people, as I rightly said, we can still make recommendations to the main council. Until we get six people on the committees, it's, it's something that we need to make sure is safe. And I think if we do this and we make sure that we have six to make the decisions, then that's fine. But if we don't have six, the recommendations are brought up and we can go through them quickly. Because it's, it's just going to delegate in the, wrong word. It's going to take away from the council the powers that it has or seems to be watering them down. And I think we need to make sure that we're careful. And I really think that the idea that Tim's had needs to be pushed through, so if I can, I'd second that. But that's just me.
Okay, just take hold of it.
Um, I, I mean, first of all, I kind of stand by the principle, the little points of appointment committees if they can't do business on behalf of the council. And the committees that we have here are all well represented by all opinions, you know, all parties. Um, I, so I'm not sure that it would be watered down. I did have another point and I'm really sorry I'm not completing with it this evening. So it's gone out of my head, but I may come back to it.
Through the chair. Um, I mean, it's like a planning, the other week, it's a dormer window. Does that really have to come to a full council to say we accept a dormer window? I mean, having that come to a committee, then to full council, just seems like a complete waste of time to me. And you might as well just get rid of the committee and just bring it to full council.
I've got, I want to be fully handled there.
It's, it's the only point in this, having committees.
Well, yeah.
If, if this is what we're going to come up against.
Well, both is too bad for it, isn't it? Is it, is it democratic just to have three people making huge decisions? But as you rightly say, a dormer window, oh, no, really? But on something like finance where you're spending, where you might have to spend six thousand quid, should it be three people representing the council? So that's the, that's the two ends of the scale, I think, isn't it?
I think it comes under a different.
Yeah, through the chair, the finance is a different thing and that's something that we'll talk about in that. But this is for planning application decisions for the most part. It is actually in the standing orders that I, in consultation with the chair of planning and I think the leader of the council can actually make decisions based on what we think of it and then report it back to council, so it's.
That's about five people anyway, and you were there as well. Okay, all in favour?
And it's, one final point is that, I'm so sorry, it's gone again. I don't know what's happened, I'll be here tonight, I'm so sorry, it's gone, I just need to write it down. Um, it's just Tim going, it's all right, come on.
Okay, three, Jim.
I just want to say, it boils down to do you want a twenty five point agenda extending to cover all the things or are you going to delegate some decisions to committees?
Yeah.
You can't have both, there's a lot of work to do.
Of course.
You've actually got to decide, are you going, and I trust everybody to make decisions, I'm not going to wibble about it. I trust people to make decisions, they've been elected by people. It's just a bit of trust. And the thing is, a lot of people are on these committees and not turning up. I don't think they've got, you know, a moment, they're not going to turn up to a.
Okay, David.
It's a very difficult situation we're in here really, Mr Mayor. The simple reason is that our administration and the administration before found this problem. So it was best that things came to full council. And I'm not saying for one minute that a dormer window should come, but it should be itemised. And if anyone wishes to bring it up and speak about this particular dormer window, that's fine. But you have to have a clear input, the tone must be clear for what you're proposing to do. Unfortunately, councillors do turn up for whatever reason. And I know, I've been there. So, so it's better to plan in fact, where the plans are on the board, it comes to the full planning council. And then you can have a list there, Mr Mayor.
Yes.
You can have a town clerk, you can have a list there, or what I call the smaller items. Yes. Can be either for or top or the bottom of the list, whichever you like. Um, so that everybody knows what's going on.
Okay.
I think, Mr Mayor, we are just complicating matters and going around in circles. We're not breaking the law in any way by doing what we're doing. And we are experienced councillors, most of us in this, well, some of us in this room.
Okay, we'll see, a long time.
Yeah, and it's, you run the Borough Council, so anything that comes through the town council, you get a second buy at the cherry anyway at the Borough. Um, you know, so anything that slips through our net, you'll pick up in the net there as well.
Simon. I'm going to let Ella go first, because she's going to forget what she says. Okay.
I've played it down this time, so I wouldn't have thought of finding it here. I'm sorry, I'm really sorry, I don't know what's come out with me this evening. Yeah, I think, I think the point about the terms of reference is that sometimes things come up that require response before the next full council. And that obviously would make it difficult for us to bring everything back to the full council. And that might sometimes be things that are not necessarily just standard planning applications. So I think whilst Jess and I are in the world, major, you know, planning, decision, you know, application, responses to applications probably should come back to the town council. I think realistically, if it comes down to not sending a response at all because we missed the deadline by waiting for the next town council or having the planning committee, and at least, at least two of whom, councillor Hallam and councillor Needham are very well versed in planning issues. And so, well, you are, I've asked twice, you've come out and things have gone, yeah, I've thought of that. You know, you're, you're very insightful, both of you. So I think given that we, we have got people on the planning committee who are sort of well versed in making those responses, I think, I think from my point of view, I would rather make sure that we have the opportunity to give those responses rather than not being able to give them at all because we won't have time to take it to a full council.
Okay, Simon. No, I forgot what was in it, so I feel like.
Contagious, sorry.
I was going to exercise that, yeah, the right to the vibrant depends, Mr Show, whether you want to move this item anytime soon. I would like to speak before we vote, please.
No. What, could we give it a trial run for say six months and then readdress it? Is that something that people would, you know, consider rather than pooring it straight off and saying, no, let's trial it and, and see?
Okay. Simon, the other one, please.
I, I understand, Mr Mayor, I do. It's a, it's a very difficult one because we're trying to put in place here a terms of reference that determines how the council committees, or this committee in particular, but there are a few more terms of references here that we'll move on to, how those are. And those, this is not, this is not a document that is a snapshot in time. This is going to last until the next annual council meeting and only be subject to review at that point. And theoretically, this could last a lot longer before, before review. I think it's therefore quite important to get it, to get it right at this stage, not taking into account who the individual councillors that we have now are. Because these, these, same terms of reference could be waved through annual council after annual council and still be used in decades' time with a completely different group of councillors with a different set of skills. So what assumptions we make at this point, I don't think we can put ourselves into that. I think that we need to, we need to look at, is this right for any council? Or any, any members of this council in the future? And whilst, you know, the, the example of that Sue gave of the dormer window, of course, you don't need a full council to make, to approve a comment on a dormer window. But then I would also say, does this council, who is not the planning authority, need to make any comment on the dormer window? You know, surely our voice could be a bit more selective about what we choose to pass comment on. We don't need to pass comment on everything. And if something is worthy of comment by the, by the council, then I think that it should be representative, i.e. quorum of the full council, which is why I presented the motion that I did. If anything's so small, I understand what Ella's saying about the tight deadlines involved. The, the bigger planning applications that are more contentious tend to have longer, longer time with more likely to see those, those coming and therefore be able to bring it to theoretically successive councils and committees. So I'm afraid whilst I sympathise with, that we're trying to create here a process that covers all eventualities and there are some eventualities that it probably doesn't work very well for, I think it's better to be on the side of caution and make sure that, that in the future, whether it's us or other, or other members of this council, that there is always a full oversight that's truly representative, that goes through the committees and that future committees won't be able to just wave things through without the oversight of the council that's been allowed to represent them.
Okay. Are we, yeah, okay.
Is this normal practice at other councils then?
Yes, through the chair, it is. It's, if you look at the Borough Council's constitution as well, it will say a minimum of a third, subject to a minimum of three on all of their committees. So obviously on the council it's more, but for a small committee, it's a minimum of three. So it is, it's normal practice up and down the country to do that.
So I think we have to all work as something that.
Which is a whole big proposal to answer.
Well, councillor House got forward a proposal, a quorum of a minimum of six, I think it was.
Which is a second.
To second advice on, so.
Six, four.
Okay, again.
Four.
Okay. Yeah, option. The proposal was carried. Okay. Agreed. Right. Financial show of footers, is this necessary or is, or can we sort this out? I mean, it's not broken, why would we try to check it?
This is just to say what the various general purposes committee can actually do because there is no little set at the moment. Presumably you want to calculate all the six members again on this one.
It's going to be the same rule, which is, isn't it?
Yeah, well, but there's more to this one than just the.
Okay, financial general purposes. I think, is that Helen?
Yeah, well, I'm hoping that everybody's read them, has actually read the document. So I guess just comments really.
Any comments on this? Jim?
Yeah, the, Mr Mayor, the, the Sandfark's assumption is correct. And there's only, there's only two things that I've, that I've underlined here as a, as a concern with regards to only as low as three members being able to vote on it, which is to consider and agree additional expenditure requests with implication being without the oversight of a quorum of full council. I understand that under, under the, the operations of the council at the moment, the town clerk has responsibility, a certain allowance to be able to make, just to, just to make the council operate. That, that makes perfect sense. I don't think, I don't think anything agreed here supersedes or takes away that. So therefore we already, we already have those powers. So I think anything that goes beyond those powers that the town clerk already has in terms of expenditure is not right for three members only to be able to do that. And it should be either the six members on this committee or a quorum of full council. And the same, item one point two on here, the committee may consider undetermined other matters. I'm not sure what that quite means. And I think that, that those courses should probably be handled on a case by case basis. But I, I make the same proposal that I did for the, for the previous, which is that to make decisions without taking them to full council, the quorum of the, of the committee should be six. Otherwise, a quorum of three is sufficient to make recommendations to full council.
Yeah. Yes. If we got, so at the moment it's three members plus Chair. So one more town clerk is quite, quite a large group. Probably be more manageable to try and get those maybe. Over time, as you rightly say, over time, people sort of tail off.
So, sorry, just on the one point one B, it does actually say additional expenditure request within budget. So council will already set what budget is. So the idea behind this one is that if we want to change what we're spending on, but maybe we don't need a thing that we've said we're going to have and want to do something different with that, it's to enable the committee to make that decision. Obviously, the minutes come back to council anyway, so if there is any decision at that point that you weren't happy with, we could try and unpick it if it's not already been carried out. Thank you.
Okay.
On, on that basis, if it's already, if the, if the expenditure's already pre-approved by.
Uh, oh, we should require Rockstone, yes. Some of us have got the problem. What is the situation with the defence? Because a lot of people don't know how to access it, do they Richard?
Ring nine nine nine.
No, but we don't, some of them don't know the codes, do they?
No, they didn't give you that when you ring nine nine nine.
Yeah, well, they didn't know the codes for the law for legalised.
No, if you ring nine nine nine, they say you need to be sure they're going to the gate.
Yeah, well.
Can I?
Still no access to it, was there?
Can I ask, you know, you know the defibrillators that, uh, how, how do they phone for the defibrillators if there's no phone? Jim?
I'll, I'll echo everybody's, everybody's points. It is, um, it's difficult to make a decision as to what this council's response should be to a phone that none of us in here, nor all high functioning people capable of running for council and, uh, and such like. You know, of course, we don't know how often payphones are used. Um, and, uh, and I think it's, uh, I, I mean, I would, um, I would suggest a recommendation from the, uh, from the council, or recommend to the council, that our response should be, if the payphone is not being used to call emergency services, if there's, if there's a proof that it's not used to call emergency services, then it's abandoned and removed. However, if it, uh, if it has been used to call the emergency services, let's say in the last year or something, I don't know. Discuss amongst yourselves as to what frequency should be, um, then, uh, then, then clearly that's, uh, that's been, uh, that, that's, that may have saved somebody's life.
Okay. Good job, Tim.
I want to say for once, I fully agree with everything Tim's just said. It's, it just, it seems, it seems ridiculous to me.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Are you asking for a page, it's honest yet? Uh, yeah, I, 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 it seems ridiculous that we could make this, uh, decision about our response to that, knowing if it is actually being used for really the last thing that a phone box would be required for these days.
Yeah, Jim.
Could there be a sign put up if the box is taken away? Emergency telephone is in, and there might be shop there, or might be a supermarket, somewhere where people can go and get access to a phone if they haven't already got one of these phones.
I, I don't honestly know, I, I, I can't recall seeing anybody use the phone box in, in the, at this end of state, but me, then, so. I'm done, sorry. Helen?
I, I mean, um, I actually think that that's quite a good idea to have sort of maybe a restricted service on it, where you can only ring for emergency services. I do think that's quite a good idea, actually. Um, I'm just, I'm not sure what unsavoury things that it's being used for. I don't know if you mean it's being used to, you know, for, for the uses of procuring illegal substances, or if it's being used for things other than the telephone.
Shall we say it's been used for a very, a variety of utilities, it's not, but, or a general.
Not, not set, not set too round here.
Okay, I'll just, I'll, I'll, Jen, Jen would like to take a guess.
What I thought is, if the problem is actually the phone box, wouldn't it be possible for us, us to have the phones that, you know, the yellow emergency call boxes that you can get, go about that maybe, and have it fitted to the house? So there's no call box itself, it's just?
Just a phone.
Yes, no money involved.
Okay. Janet?
I'll just go to ask how David, um, knows so much about this.
I have no case to answer.
Okay, right, let's, uh, well, what, I think, well, can, can anybody propose anything now?
Stay away from.
Move away from the phone.
Yeah. Could I suggest that, um, that, um, councillor Hammond came up with a brilliant idea?
Yeah.
I think we should absolutely do something about that.
Yeah.
But as far as, my name's, as far as the phone box, um, we can make our usual to the borough, the council, that, um, if there's something like the yellow, is an alternative, um, and obviously people won't actually use money for it, um, we'd be quite happy to see the, the horrible red box go. But if that is going to be put into place, like, um, like councillor Hammond said, then the red box stays. And, 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 um, but the red box needs checking on a little bit more by the people who own it.
Yeah, okay. You can propose that then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll say anything for that.
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favour? Wonderful, okay. Okay. Right, item thirteen, appointment, appointment of councillors to the following committees. Steering group.
So, thank you, chairman, um, just the, on the first one, the lot and steering group. And it was this promotion at the last council meeting where we proposed that there were other people co-opted on to this group as well. And, uh, I didn't have time to do a paper on this, but we, we suggested that perhaps it be five, um, PLOP, um, site representatives, one member from the, um, Borough and Hall Association, one member from the Diggin', and then however many councillors you want to go on there. Uh, what I would suggest is that they're non-voting members, um, so you're not having to have the exact same number of councillors on there as well, so you could have a smaller number if you wish.
Okay. Right, do you have any questions on this? David is.
Yeah, I think that's right, what the town's trying to say.
You could propose that.
Yeah.
Do you have a second then?
So we need councillors appointed to this as well.
Right?
We need, we need councillors appointed to us as well, too.
Right.
I've only had two people come forward that are interested, and that's councillor Hawkins and councillor Patterson. Um, I don't know if anybody else wants to go on, it's just a question.
Okay, well, thank you.
I, I might be quite interested in going on it.
Okay. Okay, all in favour of that, please? Men? What's the name? So, again. Item two, will I have the emergency committee?
We'll get these three as well now, chairman, unless, um, unless somebody wants to go on to the planning committee in addition to, because we've now merged it with.
So, so we'll need, what's it then?
Well, that's the ground we'd like to go on.
Should we get some, um, texting, what we call, a super level?
It's a super level.
Yeah. You can ask for that.
Yeah, well, please.
Mr Mayor, it makes, it makes good sense, uh, to have a look at him and the, and the, uh, together. It will save another meeting, and obviously, um, you're going to get a lot more information on it. So, yes, that's very good.
Okay.
I've been proposing those two members, so, so councillor Brown and, uh, Jen Briggs to want to go on to the planning committee.
Okay. Do you want to declare in best now, or, or just email to? No, that's right. I'll be, I'll be.
One thing.
All in favour of this? That's carried away. Item three on this section is, uh, event steering group.
So, um, although there has been meeting, there wasn't actually officially anybody appointed to it, so we've had councillor Coen, councillor Patterson, on, uh, and councillor Broad. I don't know if anybody else wants to be officially appointed to it.
Slime, go on then. You're gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Richard, 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 if I could, that keeps the peace. Sorry, that might ease.
And also, uh, councillor, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, right, item fourteen, to consider a proposal to create Memorial Gardens alongside the river, there is one.
Can I just say the brilliant idea? We've talked to John, who's not here tonight, about procuring, uh, through, um, trees, fruit trees, et cetera, through either, uh, the overspill from university, or contacts they use to get small, uh, fruiting trees, that also are easy enough for the disabled, et cetera, or homeless, to help themselves, and so you can build up a little, uh, cops there, memorial walk all the way through, and also edible, uh, what do you call it? Edible hedgerows, now, it's not for us humans, it's for the animals themselves, like the butterflies and bees, and you can have them designed for whatever you want to attract there, and apparently from what John says, like a stick, you basically move a bit of the soil, put it in, plant it, forget about it, and then grow it, and it's about a hundred pounds, how many did he say? About three, four hundred metres worth, so it's not that much for what we're going to get, and once it's planted in, we're attracting the wildlife in, and we're also attracting a lot of other things. I know a lot of us around here are quite interested in helping John out with this, because it's an absolutely fantastic idea that once we've all gone, hopefully it's still going to be there. And we can say, well, to your grandkids, et cetera, well, we did that. And I think it's something that's nice to remember, the gentleman that you want to remember, but the name forgets, my apologies. And I think it is, you know, John should be commended for it.
Well, thanks for that, Simon, but you know me, I'm modest, aren't I? Just going back to that, right, I mean, obviously, obviously, um, I've been on about this for a long time, Richard helps sometimes, well, he has quite a lot, right, so, obviously, the idea around that was to obviously name it after Tom Martin, right? But having talked with the council, Trish has been down with him, and I met that, oh, yeah, I know John, Mr Hawkins, or councillor Hawkins, sorry, and, and Tim Crawford, Tim's been down, and Paul Summers and all that, and we've had a lot, and they've basically said what we've all discussed between us, the path between, as I call it, culinary, I think, you all know what culinary is, don't you?
Yeah.
No, up there, am I? The culinary, which is a train bridge to the actual footbridge across going up to the air wash, there is a bit of waste land, well, I think waste land, it's shrubbery, you described it, Trish, I think, yeah, or it was. Yeah, whatever it was, yeah, Trish, but it, it, it's actually a sun trap all the year round, which is the best thing about it. So, we, we decided, I spoke to Tim, we're going to go through the rent thing, which is to improve the footpath, right, which is to put bins round, and then we need to talk amongst people who've got skills to design what we want for the garden, and this, that and the other, and then from that, with Rockstone's backing as well, we'll apply for the rent funding and get on with it. Going back to it being named after the, the garden, right, which, which was an idea concerning councillor Martin. Well, it's something to be aware, anyway, there's going to be some service houses built, or places for servicemen, uh, which we voted through on Wednesday, so there's going to be a place in Stapleford where they're going to do it. I've talked with Millen, and I don't know whether he's talked to Steve, he must have, he's a mate, isn't he? Right, but, uh, and I've also talked to his, uh, calling head at Arting, and also Zolf, uh, yeah, and, and we've decided that that is probably the preferential place to name that, the Tom Martin home or whatever, because obviously servicemen will be going there. Obviously, from that as well, I mean, this might be off the cuff, but, um, a number of residents on Oakfield have spoken to me, because they're concerned about, about the use of the garages, where can they go? And most of them have no normal life, so they're old people, who have no normal life, that. So, they've got the garages, so the council are consulting with them, they're going to tell them what it's actually for, what they're doing and what's proposed, right, they're also going to give them the opportunity for garages if they want, round the Stapleford area, I mean, the nearest one's Baker, if you know where that is.
Yeah.
They have a chancery in there, and there's a few here and there, they're going to offer them the possibility if they want, and then they're going to just, well, hopefully do what they want to do. But, uh, I've asked, I've asked them, right, through you, Jay, I've asked them to have the, when they've done the drawings, have, you know,
Yeah.
the viewing up here, so there's no mix and match, so everybody knows what's going on, and they can work, because a number of them thought it was going to be a, uh, similar to framework hostel, and we did have a bit of problems with that up Paddle Street, but that was resolved after a bit, so that's where we are on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I've got David.
Yeah, uh, uh, if I may, through the chair, uh, going to ask, um, councillor McGrath, um, when that plan is all set, I, I mean, it sounds absolutely brilliant. I think, if, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, there will be a little bit more room for some more trees, yes? Um, and that will help the environment and the setting around as well, is, is that being proposed?
That's all, David, what we said, that bit between the air wash, we're going to sit, once we get the thing to him, yeah, placed, we're then going to try and plan what we're making there, do you know what I mean? I mean, I'm not a gardener.
No.
You're not on the lot much committee either, but they do, don't can, so it's the people with the knowledge. And I'm not being rude, but they know what, what wants to go there, don't they? I've got a clue, mate.
Mr Mayor, I was just asking him because it is good for the environment as well as the area.
Okay, okay, I've got Helen, Simon, and Jim, go on.
I, I hate to be the boring one that brings this up, but, um, I'm just thinking about in the long term, um, is this, because obviously at the moment the town council doesn't open, uh, doesn't, doesn't manage Stapleford's, um, parks and open spaces, uh, they're managed obviously by the borough, so i- is, is this going to be managed by the borough, or is it going to be managed by the town council? Because obviously there'll be associated costs in the, in the long term that we need to look at as well. I don't have any objection to it, I think it's just something that we need to think about now.
We will be doing that, don't we?
Will, will be managed.
We will be doing, yeah, because I've spoken to the borough anyway. Okay, Simon.
Can I ask you, whereabouts is it, I don't know, the, the area that you've been to?
Please can you show them?
I'm going to go and draw for my, yeah.
Um, I'll share it to you later, shall I? Do you know that, um, there's a national thing coming out for, to find trees? People who want, they want lots of people who can plant as many trees as they can, you can apply to them for trees.
You can apply to, uh, you can apply to the borough, because they're giving us fruit trees, aren't they?
Yeah.
So we can apply to them and get fruit trees now, I mean.
Okay, thank you. Simon?
One thing that I think would look nice, um, and it's something that's just a little bit outside of where we are, it's going in the same direction, literally, you've mentioned it, Conry Bridge. If you look around Beeston, you've all seen the paintings, the big, um, some of them are absolutely fantastic. I've got to get a word right now, the Orioles?
Orioles.
Yeah, that's all right. Could we get something like that on the bridge, and would that be a case, like, because I said by the railway, we'd have to go through the railway, because something in conjunction with that to going over to there, would look absolutely stunning. Is it something we can look at, or is it something that, you know, we can ask the local level to, or receive, they can help us with it?
Well, regarding this project, Mr Mayor, that, um, that we're talking about, speaking about, on, the borough are very helpful when it comes to things like, um, helping in, in, in this area, and areas even in our waterborne square. And, um, they've always taken the possibility at the end, so I'm hoping that that's what will happen, uh, 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 once it's, um, been planned, and hopefully they now.
Okay. Okay, yeah, Jim.
Uh, Mr Mayor, through you, I'd like to, I'd like to thank, um, Emma for, um, doing what I know, I normally do, which is, uh, which is asking the bloody awkward questions, um, so, but I would echo it, I don't quite understand why this is lying yet. I think it's a, I think it's a fantastic idea, and the, uh, and the first time I, uh, the first time I heard about it, which was when I was sharing coffee with, with Si, uh, I thought that is absolutely stonking, and that's something that we really, really ought to get behind. But I don't know exactly, uh, who's implementing this, and, uh, and I think, uh, I think, I, I wouldn't mind a, um, a clarification, because it sounds like the boroughs are already running with it, um, and I, uh, and I think if the boroughs are already running with it, then, uh, then the, uh, the borough inviting the town council to get involved with it as well, but they, then, then run with it maintenance-wise thereafter, uh, would be absolutely superb, so, uh, so the community gets to essentially design it, and, and have a hand in its, um, in, in its implementation, um, and kind of, I've said this in, in, in the council before, at the borough's expense, which is like the best of all rooms, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're worried, Jim.
Well, Chair, just through you again, just to point out, Tim, councillor Hammond, right, the path is not town council, and that runs through it, right? And obviously, the, through you, Tim and Paul, went to not town council first to see if they'd help us do the path, but apparently all the paths have gone, so obviously, I had chat with Trish and Simon, and we decide, and Serena, this is Serena, sorry, from Hamilton, right, and we decided that we put that through the re- the rent application, because apparently all the, all your pathways and whatever, the county's funding, there's all gone for that, so we're going to put that through the rent as well. If you understand what I mean, no, yeah, well, that's what I mean, we're going to put back in the application, through rent, which is the funding that you get for what we do.
Right.
And that's put with the back into the council, the town council, Rockstone Borough, and hopefully, on the streets, one of us nice town councils, they'll back us as well, which gives us the three elements of the land, don't it? Do you understand what I mean there?
Okay. Let's have the, uh.
Sorry, can you just give you a bit of technical information, that might help.
Don't get too technical.
So, no, so, fine, let's, um, so councillor McGrath came to me and asked me to have a look at, it, it's called the FCC Communities Fund now, it used to be REN, which is, um, based on, I think it's to do with the landfill sites, and it's, uh, grant funding that's available for us to apply for. And the, he was asking that the town council apply for that grant funding, but in order to do that, we have to have either a management agreement or a lease agreement to, to look after that land. And so I'm a bit confused now, if it's going to, if it's going to be the borough council, we don't need to worry about that. But, um, so that was something I was going to bring up in terms of maintenance and insurance of the land, because there needs to be public liability insurance on it as well. And the grant deadline is the eleventh of December for this funding round, and I'm not sure that they're carrying on past that point yet, that it takes them a while to decide whether they're going to do it anymore. And but also, what I found is that we need to have a contributing third party payment, uh, which is the fee to the environmental, um, company that's providing the grant funding, which can't be part of the grant funding, it's got to come from a third party independently, and that's around about ten point seven five percent of whatever the, the total of the, the grant is. And so I think, just for my clarification, uh, I'm not entirely sure who we think is going to be applying for the grant, but in any event, if it's us, we need to have some control over that land, which obviously comes with ramifications.
Mr Mayor, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, thanks a lot. This project started off, uh, uh, um, where councillor McGrath went to Rockstone Borough Council, and, um, he started putting things, um, trying to put things in motion for this project, he's had Boris's staff down there, um, and I'm hoping that this particular project, um, will, will be obviously run by the borough, for the people. And, um, and that is one error which we really, most financially, we wouldn't have to worry about. If the town council got involved, obviously, and rather do, life funding, dual delivery, all sorts of things. If we're not careful, we might end up having to maintain it. So, I would suggest that, once councillor John McGrath has actually got some more information, and a nice plan and everything, um, and brings us the council up to date, I think this should come back at the appropriate time when councillor McGrath is ready to report back to the town council already. Because I truly don't think, with all the information we've heard so far, that, um, this grant that hangs at the end of December, I think you said, or sometime December, we're going to have time for any rate. So I'd like to see this come back to the council, once councillor McGrath, uh, has the plan and more information, and obviously, I'm sure that everyone around, uh, this chamber would support this, this particular subject. So, um, that's what I'm proposing, Chair.
Okay.
Through you, Chair, then, the third party, well, you know who the third party is anyway, as I've spoken to you about. So, what are you saying, the third party's my friend, isn't it? Right, who was going to, who, who quoted the building work originally, or for the path and this, that and the other. So what he actually saying is, he has to put in his percent, right, yeah, he has to put in cash, but does that guarantee him the work? That's a good question, isn't it? Not, I'm not saying, he, he will still do it, but does it guarantee him the work?
Well, Mr Mayor, can, can, can I say, uh, something?
No, that was a devil's, that was a bit of devil's.
No, no, I, I know what that, that, what I'm saying is that the way it is done, and I'm sure that the borough council won't have anyone playing about, you know that as well as I do. So, so I think that's on, as what I said earlier, what I'm proposing there is, yeah, I'm going to stick to that.
Okay, we'll get him soon.
Um, if we talk responsibility for, for green spaces, do we actually get more funding from the borough to actually look after our own green spaces as a, as a town council, rather than, you know, I know like a lot of people like control of our own area, um, and the localism act, would we actually get more funding from borough to actually maintain our own green spaces?
The Chair, um, the answer is probably no, um, there, there is, um, options for concurrent functioning grants, but I think that's coming to an end, um, for this year, so, um, it's unlikely that you'll get extra funding, um, that's something you have to talk to the borough council, but, as, as I know it, most councils aren't giving out extra money, it's sort of funds, that kind of thing, um, so you have to put an increase out.
Hello.
Um, just to come back to John, um, I think we haven't got financial regulations in place at the moment. Um, I, I mentioned before that the town clerk is working on those. I would imagine that works of that size, uh, and again, this is just, this is just me, it's surprising, but, um, I believe the way that other councils do it, if works of that size would invite bids.
No, I was only joking, David, I was only joking.
By the way, that.
I just wanted to clarify that for the camera.
No, I choose to be back, Candice, I was, I was, Simon.
Would we be able to, um, apply for lottery funding via the council for something like that, that would be for the community? Is it something we can physically do? Uh, because I think if we can, and if we got it, we can make a great deal from that, the whole council have got together. We've applied for this, we're doing this for the advancement of Stapleford. As I said, start with, it's going to be there a long time after we've all gone. I think it's going to be brilliant.
For the Chair, sorry, just to, to bring up that point, again, you have to have some kind of control over the land, and they will only pay you capital, they won't pay you revenue, so maintenance of it will be something we'd have to do as a council.
The maintenance, that John came up with an idea very quickly to, just to reply through you, Joe. Um, John said, you can get a farmer at the end of the season to mow the entire field. He will do that and take the, uh, what do you call it, the cuttings away for animal food, and it won't cost you a penny. There's something that maybe we can look into and see if we can combine that with getting somebody to look in, oh, go for it for us.
Okay, Jim.
How much is it going to cost us to buy this piece of land, or is it our land now?
Is it our land?
No, Chair, I'm not sure whose land it is, I'm not sure we got to the bottom of that at this point in time, so.
So we'd have to buy it?
Or we could lease, sort of, in a capital, or manage, going to a management agree with, with whoever the landlord is.
Would we have, I mean, land is quite expensive, would we have enough money in the, in our, um, to be able to buy it?
The purchase money.
I'm not sure.
I've got David, I've got David.
There's two things here, Mr Mayor. One is, the question was asked, I think, so, the question was asked about, can we get some money from the borough to maintain it? Um, and the answer to that is no, what, what would happen in that instance is, the borough would deal with it and send you a bill, so we don't. The answer to that is no, what would happen in that instance is, the Borough would deal with it and send you a bill, so we don't want that. The second part is, the John McGrath, Councillor McGrath, this is a new stage of this project, and when he's, when he's ready to bring it back to the council, then that's the way forward, Mister Mayor, and that's what I proposed earlier.
Okay. Simon, okay.
I think it was Tim first then.
No, if you go, you go first, I thought you were Tim first.
The land itself, and what we looked at in the neighbour plan is actually floodplain. However, it's, as you said, it's never really flooded, but it is classed as floodplain. Okay, it is flooded, I've just been told it is flooded, I bowed to Theresa on this one. And if that's the case, the land is virtually worthless, because nobody will give you permission to build on it at all. So therefore, if you could get it on a peppercorn rent or a lease, it's money coming into wherever owns the land. And at the moment, it's just one very, very, very old goalpost. And the dog walkers are walking around there, and that's all it's useful. So for me, I think, give it back to John, let John bring back all the information that we need to do. I think after that, we can go forward, at the moment, I think it's over to John.
Okay. Oh, John, it's up to you.
It's just an idea, but have you seen on the television where they redevelop a garden? Could we not apply to them to come and redevelop this land?
Sue.
Just a couple of bits, is that, would the land have trees, would it be a case to plant on? I mean, if it's floodplain, would it?
If I can just answer that through the Chair, there are trees there already growing. It would just be a case of planting more trees that are flood and, like, water resistant. So we did discuss that when we went there.
And just the other thing is, this was just considered proposal, so I think, you know, we've considered it. I think most people agree that it's a really good idea and a nice idea, but it needs more info.
Please, yes, it could be deeper into it.
Yeah, but I think everyone thinks...
I think we're all in favour of the, your...
So, yeah, thank you for coming to me, I was going to, I was going to second Councillor John's proposal, which essentially is, yes, we're all very interested, and can we have an update on the next meeting, please?
Yeah. Okay. All in favour?
How do you feel?
Right, item fifteen, I just want to remember about our point here. Okay, item fifteen is to consider arrangements for VE day. Really? Or VE, BJ day. Will the Alan first, or not looking down to?
Ladies first.
Well, ladies first.
Hang on, you're okay, you go.
Okay. Myself and Councillor Allen Davis were working on a project in conjunction with Stapleford History Group and also the library, of putting on a statie display for two weeks before VE day and a week after that. Now, that will display at the moment, and we've got ideas for some of the propaganda that was around, the information, the Ministry of Civil Ideas or the Ministry of Information, as it otherwise known, cookbooks, displays, and we're also looking at doing a one-on-one video. Now, this is basically, if you were young enough to be around at that time, or remember how your family was at that time, we'll do a talking heads video. Now, if you don't want to appear on that, I've spoken to some friends of mine who are actors, and they will come and relay that as they were back in that time, they'll be filmed in black and white, and be given a few bits of clothing that looks like period clothing. Once this is all been done, it'll be displayed on an open loop, and once the display is finished, that then will be given to the, which ones are the artifacts, the...
Inspire, I think.
Inspire, archives, it will stay with Inspire for something, and we've all done for, I suppose. And I think that is a good way forward, and also we can advertise whatever we need to do. But I think the first thing is, we all said we want to be part of this events group. So can I make a motion that we push this back to the next meeting after we've had the event, otherwise we'll just go to reunite if I, that I don't want to reunite. We need to get this sorted out for the rest of Stapleford, we can all do it. So that's what I'd like to propose.
I'll second that as well. I've got David first.
Mister, Mister Mayor, I attended the last table sort of, for the next meeting, and to be honest, I was asked to read all this out, and apparently everyone's got a copy of this. So, so you're not going to be at it at one o'clock in the morning, I will not read it out. But please look at the dates, the dates are very important. The information which Councillor McGrath has, has brought to this particular thing is excellent, and Councillor Richard McCray and others. So this needs to go to the events, whatever you're going to call it, and, 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 and everything could be sandwiched together, I hope. So please make sure that you do read this about the eighth, ninth and tenth of May for next year. It's important that everyone understands so far how far the Stapleford memorandum people have got. So please take note and read it, if you don't read it tonight, read it in the morning.
A little bit on the main. So yes, that's what I propose, we'll push it back until we've had a meeting.
I'll second that, I think.
Okay, all in favour?
Great, thank you. Moving on.
Financial statements.
This is just for information, Mister Mayor, just so that everybody knows where we are. Obviously, we've had other things going out of the account since, since the tenth, and will continue to go out, we've got payroll and things as well, but that's where you are as of the tenth of October.
Okay. Item seventeen is a proposal date, proposal date to cancel. It's interesting to change.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, this is a report that I've brought forward. Part of the work that I've been doing over the past six weeks is, I don't want to say the words, I'm just looking in horror at the way that we're set up in our IT situation. It can't continue, we're not GDPR compliant, members of staff are sharing passwords, there's no confidentiality. There's one email inbox, and it just, it's not right, and I can't allow that to continue in good conscience. And so part of this report is to upgrade us, because we're on the home edition at the moment of Microsoft Office. We should be on a business subscription, so I would like us to go on to Office 365. But also, what I'd like to do is try and bring councillors into that sort of backend area as well. So that you've got access to documents that you should have access to at all times, and to have dedicated email addresses. And part of that is to move us, hopefully, on to a gov.uk domain name as well, so that we look more official, there's lots of community groups and things out there, which I'd like us to be able to sort of stand aside from, so people aren't confused. Not that there's anything wrong with those groups, but it just, it would be nice for us to be visible in a different way. And further on from that, this, this report kind of grew as I was writing it. So I would like to be able to have laptops in the office as well, and then make use of the computers that we already have, to have a sort of a public hub, so people can come into the office, they don't necessarily have computers at their own home, so that they can do transactions online, and we can help them with that, if they're trying to come to the Borough or the county council. And that would sort of entail some works to the building as well, potentially, which will come back to a future meeting. But it's just to sort of get authorisation, to start looking at that and looking for grants that we might be able to use to do those things.
Okay. I'm glad you should have done it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a brilliant report, and I really enjoyed reading it actually, so thank you, because it's full of detail in it, I'm not used to seeing that. So thank you, and I'm sure everyone else has enjoyed reading it, I'm a bit geeky with your things and stuff. It's, but when we did the website a long while ago, and it was in Dayton, last year, year before, whatever, we didn't actually have dedicated email addresses, because it's like townclaw@stapletowncouncil.uk. And every single council was given, I don't, I don't mean physically given, but we set up email addresses for every council for that very reason. And for whatever the reason was, the past town clerk decided to ring up the IT company and tell them to turn it all off. And it was all costing him and everything, so, because it wouldn't look better than, you know, Hotmail, Gmail, Yahoo, if people still use MSN. We've all got different ones, it's uniform, I've got, so I think it's really good. I, I support all of it, I, where you put in there, you've got to try and get some grants, I've got a few ideas where to get some grants from. If you want me to come and sit with you for five minutes, obviously, it's not to come back to everybody, but I don't mind sharing a few little secrets with you. And if we can get something that gets you near doors, put in and all this side and the other, then I think it's brilliant, and I, I couldn't get on with it.
Okay, David.
Yeah. I can see where the town clerk is coming from. But this could, shouldn't have really been on here tonight, what should have happened was that it will, this particular thing, which obviously the town clerk will get more costing for, should really have come to the town clerk's budget proposal plan, which has to be looked at in December, and then obviously the budget, the budget itself, which I think is a budget missing on the town council. So that's an item that should come to, on your town clerk's budget plan for the next twelve months. So I'm suggesting that's what you do.
Okay.
I think I'm going to echo nearly everything that Richard said. I'd say my thanks, Mister Mayor, to you, where the town clerk, for what is a really, really good report, and clearly is needed, this town council's IT infrastructure is an embarrassment. I unfortunately, as is my motorcycle brand, I assumes, have at one point a contention with it, which is, I do not like the idea that the town council will be mandating a particular piece of software for councillors to use, that they can only use that. I will not personally install Office 365 on any of my IT. And as such, if that renders me under these unable to do my job as an IT councillor, then that would be a very, very bad thing. So unfortunately, that's the thing, I don't think that we have the mandate, unless we're providing people IT equipment to stipulate what software they use on their own IT equipment. Office 365, for example, doesn't work on Linux. So if anybody in this council happened to use Linux, then it would simply mean that they couldn't do their job, unless there was another means of being able to send them an email. So now, I don't want to, I don't want to just be argumentative about it, there are alternatives. There are many of us that have Borough Council email addresses that use a web portal. So any computer device, whether it's a tablet, a phone, Linux, Mac, you name it, we can log into Broxto email addresses on anything that, anything that's connected to the internet that has web browsers, which is frankly everything, including fridges. So, so, you know, I think that's a better option. Would, I would ask the town clerk to not force councillors into using a piece of software.
I'll tack on David's point about, you know, timing, but I think if there's actually operating without proper licensing, we're actually breaking the law, so I think it's a time management thing, it needs doing now, not in six weeks' time. We've got, you know, to get these things rolling. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to point out there.
So just through the Chair, the actual licence for the home edition has expired now, which will be sort of switched off by the end of October. So something needs to be done, it's just what we decided to do.
Yeah, just, I was just really going to sort of expand on what Sue just said as well, as I don't think this is all just about finance, this is about kind of the way that we operate, so not all of this, I don't feel we should come under just finance.
Okay, but David and Richard.
Well, I can understand where everyone's coming from. But by the time the town clerk has got all the, you know, how much evidence it costs and what, however it's going to work, on, you know, you're going to be another five, six weeks then, or anywhere. And then, of course, you have to decide, the town clerk, you have to decide exactly where this finance is going to come from. Do you want to have to actually come back to council and ask on to the borough to pay for this? Or do you take it out of administration? If you take it out of administration, you'll find by January that you will have to come back to the council and have more money to boost up your administration finance. So, you know, you have to be careful, this is, Chair, you're what?
Okay. Okay, Richard.
I was going to say, because what Tim said about the IT thing, I know when we log on to that portal, whatever you call it, would it be worth having a word with the IT department at Broxto and asking what they use, and if they, there might be something simple that we could use as a similar thing. Because the way I read that, I thought that's what they was doing anyway, when you log into something, a portal.
Yeah, it's, so Office 365, you can access through web browser, you don't have to download any software onto your system. And in fact, the licences that I recommend for council, you've just got an online version anyway, you don't actually put any software on your device.
So would it be worth speaking to the IT, because Broxto just to see, I don't know, I'm sure they're hell, because they love all that geeky stuff, you know? They love it, it's their job, it's what they do. I've got a feeling you kind of know what they're going to do, because reading is, it's right back. I just thought it might be nice that I was there, because anything that has happened at Park, I'm sure, Steve's not going to want that, not to tell us anything. I'm sure they'd like to, because it could be beneficial to them, it could benefit us anyway, so.
Yeah, just again, coming back about the budget, I mean, fairness to Sabrina, she's highly experienced at managing the budget, so I don't have any concerns there. But there is a lot of space in our budget that is, is for this sort of thing, because for the simple fact that there are lines here, there and everywhere for miscellaneous that aren't actually attributed to anything. To spend, I would think one of those lines is in the, is in the admin, I'm pretty sure one of those lines is under the admin section of budget. And coming back about the reserves as well, we've got a ridiculously huge amount of reserve at the moment. So again, I think for such a, you know, a relatively nominal cost, I don't see why it should be an issue at this point.
Okay, Sue.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got to approve this, or by the end of October, the council stops functioning, because the clerk hasn't got any software to actually function.
Richard.
Is it possible, just to propose, for now, because we all do have more questions to say, we put through and approve for the licences just to be granted, and then come back at a later date for everything else, so we kind of keep operational, and then continue at the end of the year.
Thank you. Chair.
I was going to say something different, but I'd like to, I'd like to back up what Councillor Jess Hallam just said. I think the, I think the urgent thing that needs dealing with right now is the IT infrastructure of this, of this and its staff. I think there's, I think there's more to discuss about what we use as councillors, and how we choose to be contacted as councillors, and probably, it's, well, I know, given that I'm a massive nerd, that it's a lot more complicated than we can go into in the time that we really ideally want to be spending in this session. So could we, could we perhaps split this in half and say, the bit that the staff need in order to make this council function, that we approve now, and the bit that deals with... And the bit that, that deals with what we use as councillors, we deal with later after further discussion, is that, is that possible, this fact?
Uh, the only other thing I must suggest is that we decide on the domain name, whether you want to change that, because if I set it up with the, the current domain name, it makes it very awkward and difficult transferring it over. So, if that's what you would like to do, could we, could we talk about that as well and then just decide what you want to do?
Um, I think updating the website is a marvelous idea, it's clunky, it doesn't function very well. It's not nice looking, it's outdated, it was good at the time, but things move very quickly in IT. Um, so, I'm really behind updating that as well as, I mean, uh, you've not put it in here, but, um, social media as well. Um, I'd like to see that included.
I'm sorry, Jen, I'm sorry.
Who will put the information into this new thing that we're going to have? No, I don't think we will, I've got one anyway.
Uh, well, we're gonna have a, I think, a, 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 I would.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I didn't, I didn't hear your answer.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear your answer. Who would update the website?
So, myself and Sophie would update the website. Um, in terms of the software, if you don't have a computer and you really absolutely don't want to use one, we can still do paper for you, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll be proposing, uh, Tim.
I, I, I wasn't proposing really of, of, um, anything, uh, but, but I think, you know, if I could answer the, the town clerk's point with a, with, with a question. Um, state of the, state of the TC dot, dot gov dot UK, I believe was, I'm not looking at it right now. Um, is the, is state of the dot gov dot UK available? Because that would be awesome.
Well, if it, if we were allowed to do that, there's, there's particular rules on what you can actually have as your domain name, so I can do check that, but I think you have to put in the TC. And to show that it's a townhouse or you put the whole townhouse, I'd rather not have a really long one. If it can be just state of the, then, then absolutely, yes.
They give you the step to put in the cap in the title.
Yes, it will be state of the.
Sorry?
We've had it before.
Yep.
Can I propose?
Certainly, yes.
Yeah, can I propose that we accept the software and the, and the website alteration and exchange of server as well, isn't it? It would be all going to the cloud, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and laptops?
Um, well, are, are you?
My only concern is being told, sorry, Mr, Mr, it'll go through you. Um, my only concern is being told what software we use as councillors. That merits further discussion, um, because there are, there are things that I know about, about cloud-based software that concern me deeply, which is why I personally won't use Office 365. Um, so I think this merits further discussion, but right now, I don't want my trepidation about using certain pieces of software. Uh, to get in the way of the, what infrastructure this council needs. So, I think, I think laptops, website, office equipment for the staff.
Yeah.
Licences for the staff.
Yeah.
Brilliant, yeah, crack on.
Yeah.
But don't tell me what to use as councillor unless we've got the opportunity to, to have further discussion about it, please, really.
You could have a paper copy.
Yeah, Richard.
Can I also suggest when we're looking for laptops, that we try the shops on the high street first and try and shop local?
Yeah.
Because I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm not saying they're a redeemable, but the mine, yes, mine, they're mine, it's, it's just nice to put money into the town, isn't it?
I can add one, we had it. So, you're proposing all of that?
I'm proposing it, yes, let's get this going.
To Richard, yes, okay, okay, all in favour?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, that's carried. Approve the next item, the 18, to approve accounts of names.
So, um, this was so close with the agenda, but, um, it's just a list of payments that have been made, um, out of the accounts.
Okay, fine. The item 19 is to receive an update on the garden.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this is, um, I've put this on the agenda, um, because. We were told this was only advertised two months before the actual competition happened, um, for this year. And there wasn't that many people that, um, then applied to go in it. So, I thought it would be nice if we decide, because we've had lots of feedback, um, that was positive around this for this time. Um, to decide whether or not we would like to run it again for next year. Um, obviously the costs are, are the same in terms of the prices and that kind of thing. Um, so that we can get it advertised sooner, so people have got time to plan and actually get involved in, in doing gardening.
Okay, we've got to do two things here, Mr Mayor. It's another thing the town clerk normally goes on to the budget for the town to agree on. If this goes ahead, which is a brilliant idea anyway. Um, this, this year, there was an evening set aside just for the presentation of the garden competition. In the past years, donkey years, as Mr Mayor knows, um, we've dealt with six. Um, the presentation started by four o'clock, six, didn't it? And a cup of tea and a sticky bun or whatever, and then at seven o'clock, you had to town council meeting. And I don't see why we shouldn't do that again next year. I don't see the point of opening up another evening when it's not necessary on a Friday. Um, it all costs money.
Yeah, that's okay. Simon.
I'd like to push it back slightly. Um, now, I'm going on what John said, and he's all to order, so this is bold. He said at the time, if we push it back to September time, August, September, it gives time for gardens to be well established. And so you're not going down to, uh, what did he say? Not going down to your local, um, I don't know, Barlil's or wherever, grabbing a load of plants, growing the garden, it's absolutely fantastic. Then you go around and look at it all and you say, yeah, brilliant. Rather than growing up, uh, your shrubs and you have a really good, deep, rich display. And more gardeners will come and have a go at it. Because they'll feel as though their mature gardens should be part of it, but having it so early, it kind of rules them out. And John said that it would be a better time, just to push it back a few months. Brilliant idea to have it, it really is, because it, it does touch and base with, uh, with that, where people, but we need. I think just to push it back a couple of months so that everybody can have a go.
I certainly agree, I mean, I mean, gardens are absolutely stunning anyway, even, even though it's so late, it's very harsh. But I've got to, too.
Um, yeah, um, I mean, I went round there to look at the gardens and took photographs, which then created this, this layer that was put in the town council. Um, which I think a lot of people appreciated. Um, tack on board what you've said about, um, it was usually, the presentation night was usually before a town council meeting. Well, the feedback that we've had from actually having it separate was people didn't feel pushed in and out of the building. Because if it's held before a town council meeting, you've put that timescale on it, so, you know, people have to be out, because we're all gonna be in here at a town council meeting. Whereas people stayed behind, they lingered, um, they had chats with the councillors that turned up, um, you know, and they really enjoyed. Actually just having that night about what they've done, they've spent time creating their gardens and doing it. And, and the people really enjoyed actually being here and I think that's worth an extra night, that's what we're here for.
Okay, well, Helen.
Uh, yeah, just to come back on the, uh, separate evening again, um, that, that was actually something that the previous town clerk decided would be a good idea. Um, and I, I agreed with her at the time, um, she felt that the previous year was not quite on to plan. Uh, so she wanted to do something a bit more special on this occasion. Um, and so, uh, obviously then the town clerk, uh, left and, um. I did discuss it at the time, Sophie, whether we wanted to, to bring it back to the sixth, but we decided that, because we were kind of already half aware of the date that we would leave it. Um, I'm glad that we did, um, because I think it went down really well. Uh, we had comments from lots of people, uh, and, and were really pleased with the effort that the town council had put on for them. Um, and with regards to the additional cost, um, we didn't spend anything outside of budget. Um, staff cost, there wasn't really any additional staff cost because, uh, there was, um, it was, it was the, it was the town clerk and the admin assistant Sophie who, uh, stopped that event. So, uh, they take off tiny little, um, so really it was, it was, it was, you know, a pretty small cost of opening the building. Um, in terms of, you know, the additional electricity that was used, as we thought, I, I think, I think personally going forward, I think it'd be better to have a separate evening, um. Because my excuse then, maybe it just, it's a bit more special, isn't it?
Okay, um, I'd like to agree with the two ladies over there. Um, I think if we push it back, it's a good opportunity to have that special day. And yes, I understand where David's coming from, by saying we've always had it at this point, but we are, we're rushing them out. If it is possible and feasible to do. We could have it there, not as many councils as we can be there, and we can answer questions, take questions from anybody else that's there. Um, I think it's a brilliant idea to keep it a separate day and to push it back forward, and that's it, really.
Um, looking at the item on the agenda, Mr Mayor, um, and it doesn't sound to me. I, I, I'm, I'm not a horticulturalist in the slightest, like there's robots for a hobby rather than, rather than flowers, but, um, but the, uh, but, 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 but it sounds to me like, uh, like nobody is proposing that we don't do it again. Um, so could I, uh, please move the motion for the sake of business, uh, that, that we do run the event again next year? And that we refer the details either, and the, and I'll defer to the, defer to the leader on this one, as to what leader would like to do. Either defer it to a later meeting of the full council or, um, refer it to the, to the events committee to, to hammer out the details and then bring those, bring those suggestions to full council for consideration.
I'll second that.
I've got, there's just one more comment, it could make it in the day, meet the council at night, and then that would kill two birds with one egg. Okay. So, proposing?
I second that.
Okay, all in favour? Let's carry on. Okay. Right, hundred and twenty. Uh, to consider making representations to not, to not county council regarding accessibility at the technical lane end of the road. So, this is, so that's, I'll, I'll propose that I'll start before, okay, with you, yeah? Sorry? I said, propose that I'll start before, wrong. Yeah, yeah, um, so, um, now these contacts have the next sort of job of maybe tactile paving, which you'd load, which you can come off the bus on, you can go over that. There's actually an hour and extended refuge in the middle, wide enough for a wheelchair, again, on the other side. Lovely slope, a nice wide path which then ends in a set steps. So, it's, it's a footpath eleven is, is ridiculous for, for, for the disabled, you know, they have to now all the way around. Um, so if you're a wheelchair user, it's, it, um, it's a bit disadvantageous. They should have had, I, I wasn't keeping my eye on that end of the path, um, a, a sloped access. It might be too steep for a slope, that sloped access, that, that could have all been thought about earlier. And I can imagine not county council saying, oh, the money is too much now, but if we don't make the representation and, and, and give our objections, then I think we're letting, we're letting disabled be beaten down. Okay, David.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I have to say, I understand where my interpretation is coming from. The path now is fine, I know that you come to the end where there's steps. Before that was all knocked down and taken away. That path was very dark and it was very, very rough. And when it came to the steps, they were very awkward to get down from one step to another. It's always been like that, now, since they've redone the path and put the steps in, yes, it's the best it can get. It got past through ploughing, it, it, and as you know, people in wheelchairs and, and other, like. Accessibilities of disability movement can just go around. Now, if they had put a slope, kind of, and started to stop going from the path going all the way down, by the time you got halfway down. Someone that is not strong is pushing the wheelchair, shoots straight in, it'd been from rain car come along, boy.
This is why it's a switchback.
That is why, that is why it's always been like that, and I think they made a good job of it this time. And, and it is easy access for someone just to go around, two minutes at the most, three at the most.
Four minutes, okay. Right, George, George, yeah.
Oh, in our, I'm probably re-on this, well, to be honest, but in our side, again, we'd probably miss it at planning, didn't we? In our side, and I think, yes, I think we should make representing, representation to county council. It probably is too late, right, but in our side, that's something that, that us borough councillors or our planning department are probably risk. Right, and as you've said, it's fantastic job, it should probably just have been, like you say.
A switchback.
A switchback, yeah. But I think we should, we should mention that, because we, I think, when it went to our, on Tuesday night at planning, we had someone, somebody speaking, we were all ladders way crossing, which was mind-boggling. But I think we should have actually, I think we should say that we feel that it's been overlooked. And, and we appreciate the problem, it's something that we can't do about.
Simon, as a care, when somebody pushes somebody around in a wheelchair, I think you're both right. We need to say this is a problem, it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Because, yeah, it might even be three, four minutes to go around, but there's also sizes of us in wheelchairs, from small to, uh, my size. And you just imagine somebody trying to push me up one of those hills for four minutes, they need the medal. Now, it's a case of, I think we push it back to them, we say, can we look at this again? Because then we've done our job as, as councillors and it's something very good for you to bring on.
And as a choice, pass it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, uh. And I, I gave that the final.
Do, do you make a second up?
Oh, I'll second it, yeah.
And the response, not county council. Okay, fine, all in favour? Of course, again, I do. Right, hundred and twenty-one, to consider joining the national association of local councils.
Uh, I've put this on the agenda, uh, Mr Mayor, just, um. Most of the councils in Nottinghamshire are part of this association, it's almost like a union for the councils, so if you need legal advice or support, you can go to it, obviously pay a subscription for that. Um, and it would have been really, really helpful for us to have access to that, because we've got no policies and procedures and they have ten days off them all. So, it would be really useful to be able to have that access to that organisation. Uh, they do member training, they do staff training, and it's all a discounted raise. Um, and it's something that I think the council should consider doing. I do have some figures on the costs of that. So, at the moment, they're doing a six-months membership, so that would take us to the first first of March, when you join, membership is immediate, so you get all the benefits straight away. Uh, so for a six-months, um, subscription, it's a thousand and ninety-two pounds twenty, it's based on our electorate, basically. Um, or a twelve-month subscription is two thousand and twenty, I can't say it, two thousand one hundred and eighty-four pounds and forty pence. Um, but that's the nineteen-twenty subscription. Um, if I was going to recommend to, to spend that, I'd say do the six-months one, to take us up to the end of the year and see what money is, um, for the next year's subscription.
Richard, what about Richard?
Yeah, I, I think, I've got to say again, I, I know a little bit about it now, I think just meeting is very good, you know, I think it's very good. Yeah, I think, I've got to say again, I know a little bit about it now, I think just meetings are very good now, and I think they're very good. I'm surprised I haven't been in it for a lot longer, postings and that, I don't know, I imagine it's valuable for money, I know it sounds a lot, but when you look at the benefits we can get from it, the helping advice, and like you just said, taking right all these policies and we've got terrorists and that, and we can just cut and paste on stick, say to the TC or whatever, and put it on there. It's going to save people a lot of time, it makes them write some things, and it's all proper, and it probably puts us in mind of all this up the council. So, I think it's, I support it definitely.
Okay, a lot of praise then.
Okay, I would say that this is almost essential, actually, having looked at the suboptimal condition of the council when we sort of started looking at it. I just don't think we've, it was for the purpose that we've got, it's desperate need really. And I would say that I've had some resources from NALC through the Green Party, and they are phenomenal. So, it's not just policies and stuff, it's all the things as well, the work of councillors handwork that I circulated and stuff, that was from NALC. So, it's not just that, it is really, really useful stuff, definitely would support it.
Okay, a lot of love. I think spend two thirds of the day looking for health and safety information just appropriate to small councils and bailing. I think, if you multiply that by all the stuff we need to change, it could actually save us a bit of dodgy.
Okay, Ellen?
Yeah, I think, if you were just to highlight, if you would, that legal assistance you can get from NALC that probably would have been useful for us at various points in the last six months. And again, the local councillor ward scheme, if, you know, we wanted to adopt that as part of our direction, which I think would be a good idea, again, we would have to be members of NALC. Certainly with regards to any staff training, I think it's very important. As I understand it, for us to adopt and use our general powers of competence as we're local in Mact, we have to have a town clerk who is qualified, and NALC provides that qualification. And I think we actually have to be a member of NALC as well to utilise those powers. So, I'm fully in support of this, I did bring it in July as well, I know councillors ask for more information probably, but obviously with things that have taken over, so I would fully support us joining this from the point of view of things that already have sort of gone by.
Okay, Jess?
Yeah, so Ellen told her he was born to pin you, I imagine, that's what I was going to ask about.
Okay. Your proposal is, Ellen?
Yes, well, I would propose that we accept the offer from NALC, joining for six months, on the thirty first of March. Yeah.
Okay, all in favour? That's going to be nine two. Thank you. Twenty-two, now attended some councils, six months, considered for six months. Consider the tax report.
So, thank you, Mr Mayor, this, I wrote the report for you. This is in relation to councillor Bolewia, who hasn't been to any meetings since she became councillor. As far as I'm aware, we've not had any apologies or reasons for that. I did call her because I understand she's moved, so I couldn't write to her. I did call her to say, you know, this is coming up, are there any reasons if you want us to take them to consideration? So, before the end of the expiry of the six months, council has to consider whether they want to accept her leaving for absence and she just carries on, just comes to the next ordinary meeting as soon as possible. Or if we're just going to say, once that expires, then we'll declare a vacancy and then we have to go through the whole sort of appetite and that would be your option and process.
Okay.
Yeah, a great frustration to me, as I'm sure to all of the councillors here, as it always is when you have a councillor not attended. I take this very, very personally, as the person that essentially did the most work to get that councillor elected. And unfortunately, I can say that, you know, the best intentions were there. Family circumstances, as they are for a lot of young people, got very turbulent and very complicated and did cause absolutely bleak the area. I would have liked to have had some communication and not hear about this on the grapevine and not have somebody just go to ground and go ostrich style in dealing with this problem. But I don't know the circumstances, we don't all know the circumstances. I would not suggest that we extend this any longer, I would accept it as a vacancy. And, you know, be ready to call this what it is, which is a casual vacancy.
Yeah, thank you, Rob.
Town clerk, of all the formal letters that you need to send, have you sent?
Yes, it's, we don't have to send her any letters, we just have to try and, well, attempt to get some sort of response out of her. It's on each councillor to provide their apologies for meetings and to give reasons for those apologies. And there haven't been any, they haven't been given.
The early, some of the early meetings, there were apologies given by myself. But that's a point of, that's a point of, yeah, whatever, it's not relevant to the legal reasons involved in this, which is that we should give an apology every time or not, with still being in same situation, so it's a little relevant.
It's, well, it's where the council wants to accept those apologies, and the reasons for that is okay, basically, for us to have not been here. There are statutory reasons why people can not be here. So, if she was a member of the forces, for example, and she'd been called to war, she wouldn't be kicked out because there are statutory excuses, basically, to have, I don't think that's the case in this.
Absolutely.
No, so it's up to council whether they choose to accept that she's had a personal circumstances and she's not, she doesn't end on the end of the fortyth November on it, or just leave it for now.
Richard?
Just, I know you said you gave apologies, but apologies after being writing from the person themselves?
No, that's something that you made up on the spot, so let's not try and retrospectively take that to, they had to be in writing. This is interesting because apologies have been given differently to that before, and it's never been there, it's never been questioned. Let's not get hung up on the trivia involved in this. Nobody's asking for us not to, you know, to keep on that councillor any longer. I just made it as a point of principle that apologies were given on a couple of occasions. It's incidental to what we're dealing with, which is the fact that this is a vacancy. And I think that there is absolutely no likelihood that said councillor is going to turn up and say, you know what? Yeah, sorry, can I have my seat back? But I don't think that's going to happen, so.
Okay, Simon?
I'd like to move this one, I propose that we do advertise for.
Where necessary.
Where necessary, but, you know, it doesn't matter what it is, it's been six months, you've tried to get in contact with her, she hasn't come back to us, and so it would be the same for all of us, and so regrettably, which is why we are. So, I'd like to propose that we call it what it is and, okay, is it an actual vacancy or?
Is it a casual vacancy?
Do I, she'd be very casual.
Are we able to call an election on this, a by-election?
Church, through the church, no, we will advertise it as a casual vacancy, and then if, I think, ten electors come forward and call for an election, then we would go to that.
I was very happy the last time this happened, so we'll, we'll go forward then.
Okay, do I have a second, the first one? Thank you. All in favour? Got it? Thank you. Right.
Right, so the first item here is, the mayor actually went to the, I'll call it book signing, I guess, for this local lady that's written poems, and she came in to see us, and that's how we sort of got to know about this. She would like to sell copies of her book from the council offices, if that's okay with everybody. It is for the church, St Peter's Church in Nottingham, so it's not a local church. But we were happy to support it and put it on the website, so it's up to the council.
Yeah. Okay, Simon?
I'm going to be the one that's the bad guy here. I think you there, that's true. I'm sorry, it's got nothing to do with Stapleford, as in, if it were raising money for something in Stapleford's area or something like that, I think we should explore it wholeheartedly. But while it's not in Stapleford, it's in Nottingham, I'm afraid, I don't think we should show it. Sell it from the council buildings itself, I don't mind advertising it, but not selling it, it has to be kept. For this is good for the people of Stapleford, that's just my viewpoint, so, I'm going to take the vote, what I go next?
Thank you.
There's a tricky one, there's, Mr Mayor, I can understand what councillor Cross is saying. I always try to support as many people as possible to do what they want, good for any community. And we, the town council, in the past, have supported quite a lot of things in some of our churches and other things from our, my, from the town. I cannot see why we shouldn't support this lady to do this. I mean, the money's not for her, so I've got no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. We've got the camera.
Oh, just go, say, come, just move and vote on it.
All right, okay.
Well, Ellen, you want to say, you want to say something?
I was just going to very quickly say that I would support this, except for the fact that I have an issue with supporting any particular religious group. I don't think it's appropriate for town council, that's my.
Ooh.
That's my point on the issue.
Right, well, can I have a vote on this, please? That's, um.
It's for or against, isn't it?
It's for or against, yes, it's for or against. Could have the vote for.
For selling the, for supporting the, for selling the votes in the council.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, and again. One, two, three, four, five, six. Four, seven, eight. Okay. Thank you very much.
So, this next item, we've had a couple of letters from two community groups that hire our rooms of an evening. And they, in the past, they've paid a particular amount, which they were happy paying that amount, but then obviously it's crept up over the years. One particular group used to receive a ten percent discount off the price that they had, which was lower than everybody else anyway, which was taken away from them in, I think, twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. The upshot of it is that the amount of, they survive on subs, basically, so it's members paying it, which is not a great deal of money. And they're, they're basically, all their money is going on renting this building for their room. And so they wanted us to consider whether we would give them a discount again or reduce their charges or do something, basically, which means that they can still hire speakers and not just pay all their subs money on renting the rooms.
Okay, what about you?
Yeah, I can understand exactly where they're coming from. This, last year's budget of, in fact, through the budget report regarding rents and all the sorts of things are looked into. An item on here, B and C, and then you've got Christmas lights, hemlock and play day. All these things should come through the town tart report to the three project meeting and then to the four council budget meeting. That's an area that's always been worked, so what happened in that last January, start of the project in the new year in April. So, what happens now, obviously, still, the budget will be in January, and the new proceedings, either rent rises or whatever the case may be, and all these things, will start in April. And that's how, is what normally is in the town tart report.
Okay, upward to China?
It's this group, community group or business?
They're community groups, the normal rent for community groups is fifteen pounds an hour for an evening session. These groups are paying ten pounds an hour at the moment anyway. At the moment, what we do is have members of staff come in, so the caretakers will come in, and they're staying on premises for two and a half hours, so we're actually making a loss on these groups at the current rate that they're paying. It's only a small amount, but it's still a loss. And essentially, I've spoken to the insurers, and because we have higher indemnity, we don't actually have to have somebody here if we don't want to. I'm not entirely sure whether that decision is made or if it's something that we'll be happy doing. But that's the, the nuts and bolts of it here, we don't have to have somebody here, but we do, and we're making a loss at the moment on these groups.
I mean, from where I'm sitting, you try and find someone at the same rate we're giving, the same rate. I think they're getting a very good rate.
Yeah, true.
I don't think we can start on drop money, otherwise we're in a losing game. I hate to say it, it's a case of, I know it's for a community, but they're getting a community level at ten pound an hour. I think it's fairly good. And if we're making a loss because we're actually having to put people in here, I'm afraid it's an unstarter.
Ellen?
I think, I'd have to agree that it's a very good rate. I'm not sure how feasibly we can reduce that, and with the amount of staff there, I think the issue is really is our staff going to be able to come and open up and then go home and then come back down. I think that this is partially going to come down to probably missing the staff to want to do that anyway. I think ten pounds an hour is a very good rate, and they are always getting a reduction. Which group are they?
I'm not saying, probably, the camera off, but, yeah, the two evening groups.
Richard?
These are community groups, in the community, so obviously doing what's called for there for everybody and anybody to go to, whatever they're doing, I don't know, I'm trying to get them here. Have they not applied for section one three seven funding from this town council to help them out, through a proper room? And use the section one three seven money, I can't remember what the council counts is, to help them pay some rent? So, we're hoping to get it back, because, like, some community centres in Rossdale, they get extra money after council. Well, like, one of the community centres gets four thousand pound a year for rent, the county mayor comes along, gives them a cheque, they're probably going to have to cash it because the council has moved the money to make it in, so they're trying to pay, we're giving back. It's the same kind of thing, we do them some one three seven funding, obviously they've got to apply for it, and they've got to agree by it all, and they're going to have to pay their rent, so how come I've noticed, I've not seen this year a section one three seven report for that? I don't think we have, have we? So, that funding is still there, isn't it? It's just an idea to try and help them out, I don't know. Can that funding be used for that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I seem to be, I seem to be not the first backer on this item on the agenda, I think councillor Cross is still my favourite. The, the price is the price, and it's already cheap enough. And even if we can cut staff costs by leaving the place unattended for a certain amount of time and then coming back, even if that's deliverable, it's still incredibly cheap, and that's still the price. So, I think Richard makes a very good point about, we could offer to support, we could be constructive in this and say, you know what? Let us help you to, we're to force them avenues of funding, or maybe, for goodness sake, why can't you afford ten pounds an hour if you want to help with your business case? But I don't think we all speak with a discount below what's already our bottom rate.
I've got, maybe?
Yeah, Ellen, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, yes, I understand where people are coming from. Regarding section one three seven, which is what the mayor was talking about, which normally is on the agenda, but I haven't seen one yet. Obviously, and I don't think that... That some of the councillors here actually know what section one three seven is. Well, section one three seven, if I'm allowed to, um, is, is amount of money that's put back from the, but, it's all kind of mind the budget from last year. So groups and organisations can apply to the town council for a certain amount of money, to help them in whatever projects they've got going. And I would like to pose a ask, uh, uh, the town clerk, because there is an information about section one three seven in your office somewhere. And, uh, I would ask if it's possible that you will put something with about one three seven with the minutes next hour in, uh, uh, after, uh, when these go out. So that you can have possibly, uh, section one three seven on, on the agenda as a goalpost, if you understand what I mean, as a support. Um, it's, it, it is there for that particular situation, as councillor McPhee has said, and, uh, and anyone outside as well, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Go on.
Jay, just, have we got any idea to the community groups, what they actually hear? Because, uh, I, I do apologize, I don't, I mean, I know knitting lanes and all that, I mean, and give away watches and all that.
Yes.
So what two groups are there?
So one's an arts group and one's, uh, a garden group.
Which is, which is, to me, that's, that is ridiculously low, so surely perhaps Richard probably is one, three seven. Surely, just giving them that bit of education to zip themselves, organise a raffle, do something. And, and, and involve more people to get, what is it, forty quid, right? I mean, if you do a raffle, right, I mean, well, you give the events committee when you get Chas as Angels and Richard and all that, and whoever together. If you do a raffle, if they do two raffles a year, you'd raise, you'd raise a hundred quid. So sometimes, I, I know I'm all for charity, I'll never change, but sometimes you, they've got to have a bit of zip themselves. But surely, it's not all to have a raffle, I mean, I don't know, it's in the group.
It's something we can help with.
Yeah. Oh, whatever.
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, the art group has been there since doomsday. Um, they do some nice work, so then some of their members have passed on. Then the majority of people are maybe, um, some of them might be slightly younger than me, a lot of them slightly older than me. But the point about it is, it's a group, they come once a week and they enjoy what they do. And I don't want to see them having to, can't afford to use this facility for their painting and art. And they're very, some of them are very good at it.
Perhaps it's good to have paintings.
And I want to, no, councillor McPhee, go over the top hand. So, so, so if we, as a town council, can't help a group that's been standing here since doomsday. It's a pretty poor council that we're sitting at, table we're sitting around, we should be helping them somehow. Even if we involve them in some fundraising with them, they, they, they do need help, Mr Mayor. You've been there, you've. Christmas calendar.
No, okay, fine.
And then the advanced country we talked about, we can get something involved to help them out, right, it's one of the fundraise. We can't help them with the rent, but we can help them other ways, and I think that's what we need to put across to them. All they need to do is come and ask us and we'll help them. But as I've said repeatedly, ten pound an hour, that's nothing.
Jay, move to vote, please. Right, is, uh, what do we propose?
Uh, no, I'm not, well, I'll make a, I'll make a, I'll make a proposal if, if it gets moved on. Um, um, I propose that the, um, that the town clerk on behalf of the council offers to, um, offers to our, uh. Our ability as a council to, uh, to support in other ways, however, rock bottom rent is already quite charitable. And, uh, and, uh, and that the council doesn't offer any further reductions.
Okay. We've got a second, recorded name. Simon, okay.
And the town clerk, obviously, I'm sure put this thing out about what, what.
I can see, request for candidates to wide increase from the.
What?
And, and support, uh, have it happen.
So this was a request from, um, is it Ellen Leisure that does the Christmas events, um, we, obviously we currently, um, support the Christmas switch on. I don't think we support the hamlock happening, I'm not sure about the play day, but they've asked for additional funding, so there were more people coming on the Christmas one at least. And then to support the other two items as well.
I've got, Richard.
Yeah, I was gonna say, with, there's three things there, so the first one, Christmas switch on, obviously this is next year, not this year, and play day next year. I'd, I'd, I'd like to propose that we actually, we don't say yes or no now, but I do think, because that is a lot of money, we need to invite Alex in or Ellen Leisure, Lieutenant Lejor, a recorder. To explain to us what he wants, inform us of a proper breakdown, because it is a lot of money. But if that's okay with everyone else, I just thought, you know, if someone's asking for that kind of money, I, I don't want them to tell me what they want to spend it on. And then hamlock happening, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say what I've said last year, the year before, the year before, the year before, the year before. It's a brilliant event, it's really good, but it's actually an event in Branket, it's not in Stapleford. And, and the reason we've not supported it in the past, because it is that, it is an event in Branket and not in Stapleford. And example, why, why should the people in Stapleford use their taxpayers' money to pay for an event in Branket? Yet when we've got play day, Christmas lights, switch on, other events in Stapleford, the people of Branket don't have the chip in to pay for an event that's happening in Stapleford. So I, I just think, like, last time, another time, we should just scratch that off, we should leisure a, a big enough and. To go out and, and get sponsorships from loads of other places, perhaps we should ask people in Branket, they want a chip in as well, because they know chip in's hard in Stapleford, so. I, I, I can't spoil that one, but I do like the venue, I'll always have all the.
All right, thank you, uh, David.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I can't speak about the head well, so I'm not going to. Uh, the Christmas one, uh, obviously is for next year, this is something that's home in Bristol, um, by the town clerk through the budget. And actually, you should have received a letter, um, from Lieutenant Leisure about why they want the money. Uh, and secondly, the play days, which are absolutely brilliant. Um, and, um, the play days cost more every couple of years than they always do. The council have always supported play days and it used to be, I can remember when, it was only five, four hundred pound, but it's gone up a bit now because, whatever. So play days, um, I would support big time. Uh, Christmas, uh, lights, which obviously you will have a letter from L L Leisure, which means to say, um, that you will. Bring this up, if it doesn't come up this time, you'll bring it up with the information and, and, um, there's no reason why it, it, those two events. That we can't pay the increase.
Okay, thank you, uh, Simon.
I agree with Richard on the one for Christmas lights, which one, I think he needs to come in the dresses, so we can see on people that have got concerns, can put that across. Um, I understand where it's coming from, play days, no brainer, um, they're a fantastic event and we need to encourage that. Now, I'm slightly different from Richard on this one, sorry, um, the hamlock happening, I would like us to say. We will give you X amount if you can fundraise the same amount, so we'll match it, but you've got to fundraise the same amount. And if that gives us a way of saying to the people of Stapleford, we all go there, we all enjoy it, but we're only gonna pay our fair share. And if they can raise, um, say a hundred quid, for example, and we give them a hundred quid. Then the people of Branket have paid their fair share and we will pay ours, and it's a way of going forward and being fair.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Ellen, did you have your hand up before, mate?
Oh, no, it's all right, go on, you aren't forgotten again.
Okay, uh, I just, um, I'm assuming that, uh, that Richard's, um, motion, I'm assuming it was a motion. Uh, to ask Alex Khan of L Leisure to, uh, to come in and make a presentation as to why we ought to part with more cash. Uh, if that was a motion, I would like to second him, please.
Yeah, okay, right.
Obviously, Tim, if all made a decision, that's what, lots of people, what you're saying, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, do, do we, can we vote on that, please? Or, okay. So we, do we, so let's, if we, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.